The date is May 5th. At this time, I will call the public hearing for ordinance 2025-4 to set tax rates for fiscal year 2526 to order. The sign-in sheet looks like we have nobody that wishes to speak, but I will still confirm, is anyone in the audience who wants to speak right now regarding ordinance 2025-4 to set tax rates for fiscal year 2526? All right, hearing done. I will go ahead and close this public hearing for ordinance 2025-4. We will see you in 15 minutes for public hearing on ordinance 2025-5 to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2526. Thank you. The date is May 5th. The time is 7:10. At this time, we will call the public hearing for ordinance 2025-5 to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2526 to order. Looks like we have four people who wish to speak. I do know that we did advertise this at 7:15, so we will still accept new speakers up until then if anyone else wishes to speak. Above the four, did anyone else not sign in who wishes to speak this evening? Only reason I ask is I want to make sure that we allot enough time, but we can't go into 7:30, obviously, for our council meeting, so. All right. First up, we have Mr. Doug Alexander. And if you would please, when you come up to speak, just state your name and your address. How are you, sir?
Good evening. Doug Alexander, here speaking as a, not for the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company, but as a member of the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company. I want to start off by saying I've been here many times before and seen most of you at some point in time. I certainly appreciate the opportunity again this evening to speak. First off, I'd like to remind everyone here that actions speak louder than words. Let's keep that in mind throughout the evening, please. Why are we cutting and capping funding for the local fire department that's been in place for over 50 years? Certainly, this will help in cutting the growth in town, as emergency fire and rescue services cannot handle more with less. Less funding clearly means less services available. How do we handle a nearly $50,000 reduction of expected funding for this year? Well, let me throw out some ideas for you. 23 more breakfasts, 10 more basket Bingos, 10 more chicken barbecues, a second carnival, and that is if we reap maximum profits off all of them. Can we do that? Hard to say. How can we do some cost savings to make up for this shortfall? We can cut all free uses of the reception hall, carnival grounds, and the community room at the fire station. We can cut support for our out-of-town training events, parades, and other team-building events. We can charge for alarm responses and fire responses. But probably first and foremost, and the one that hits home the hardest, is selling the carnival grounds. And that will be very difficult to do, but very easy to do, as many people as we have asking for it. What does that do for the town? You're going to find a place for four ball fields, for one thing. That makes it tough if we have to sell the carnival grounds, but that would certainly be an option to cut out for a continuous shortfall. So, in short, the $41,000 increase in office expenses, $68,000 increase for Parks and Rec, and $70,000 increase from budgets of the previous year for streets and roads shows we have a lack of recognition of what's most important for the safety of our town's citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Mr. Jim Linton.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me a couple of minutes here. My name's Jimmy Linton. I reside at 203 Flyer Court here in Mount Airy. I'm the treasurer of the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company and an active member. I joined the Junior Fire Company in 1963. I became an active member in 1965, which adds up to 60 years. As the first assistant treasurer, I assisted Mr. Carl Smith, Teen Smith, who was your mayor, air mayor, from 1968 to 1972. I became the carnival treasurer in 1976 alongside Mr. Teen Smith. I became the treasurer in 1978. For the past 47 years, I've been paying the bills for the volunteer fire company. Love the job. I want to speak this evening about respect, pride, dependability, and money. It seems that Mr. Hushire, Mayor Hushire, is downplaying the contribution to the fire company as being justified by comparing other town contributions to their fire companies. I've advocated for years to the county budget committee how great the town of Mount Airy is to support its fire company and what they've done for it. I sit on the budget committee with the other 14 fire companies, and I brag about what Mount Airy has done. It's a pride. They're all envious of what the town of Mount Airy provides for their company, and they don't have anything close. Jerry Johnson was mayor in 1992 to 2002. He showed his support of the fire company by attending a meeting with myself and the Frederick County Commissioners at Winchester Hall in Frederick. There was question about what Frederick County was doing money-wise and what they were trying to help Mount Airy. At that time, Mount Airy and Blue Ridge Summit were the only two companies that received monies from Frederick County, although we were the fifth running his company back then in Frederick County out of all the ones in the city. So, out of all the 20-some companies at that point, they're now up to 30-some, Mount Airy was very busy in Frederick County, and those commissioners recognized that. So, since we're splitting the two counties, we get a lot of support from Frederick County, and not as much as we'd like to have for what we do, per se, but for another county to help us out with their finances is good. Why would they cut the contribution to the fire company? I remember early on that the town struggled to figure out how much they should give the fire company. Mr. Hobbs there, he was the one that came in. He was the president of the fire company for 17 years. He came in our monthly meeting 52 years ago. I was there, and he said, "We figured out the town's contribution to the fire company." Because every year before, it was, "How much do they give them?" And you all know better as to what you're trying to divvy up now, and whatever it was back then, it sure wasn't as complicated as it is today. And he said, "We're going to commit 10% of the real property tax per year." The town of Mount Airy has contributed 10% to the fire company ever since. 1973, I know it was researched by you guys somewhere in the minutes and tried to see where it was. We sure didn't look back through here minutes that long ago, but I vividly remember, popped the steps, and Delane said, "Here we go. Here's how we're going to do this." And it was a relief, because prior to that, there was the question, "What do we give the fire company?" You know, it was like throwing a dart or something. But for 52 years, and keep that number in mind, please, the precedent was set, and it has remained up to now, or I hope not. So, question, why would Mayor Hushire and Town Council change something this critical to the operation of the fire company? At a previous Town Council meeting, I remember Council de Mauder suggested cutting the fire company's contribution. This was last fall. He was trying to figure out how we can, "I'll help to do the budget," and told the mayor. Well, I was ready to kill him. I mean, when I heard it, I heard it. And I thought, "Who is this guy?" At the same meeting, Mr. Munder questioned his reasoning. I remember that, too. So, those two kind of got into it a little bit, which interested me, but nevertheless. But Mr. de Mauder had no good answer at that time. At the closing of our EDC meeting, I'm on the Economic Development Commission, and Mr. de Mauder is the liaison for the council. He asked if he could go tour the fire company facilities. I was happy to hear that request and gladly gave the tour. The chief was there, president of the company happened to come through, and after Mr. de Mauder's tour, he had a better understanding of the complexities of the fire company's operation. And he has shown great support to the mission of the fire service, its needs, and he continues to do so. So, kudos to Mr. de Mauder for doing a 360 and getting behind now that he was aware. And then shortly thereafter, President Washington Ball and Mayor Hushire also was giving a tour. And that's great. We love to show it off. You know, we're proud of what we have, a lot of pride up there. So, I hope they, they didn't say much, but I hope they understand what it's all about Let's look at the real fire company and how it got to where it is today. We're going to celebrate next April, 100 years in service. 100 years. And with that, you ask or you wonder, "Where, how did it happen?" People before us, as dedicated as we are, and as all these members here are, that are making it continue to happen, there was no money from the town back then. Everything you've seen, the firehouse, the Activities Building was the first thing. The first engine, a 1926 American La France. It's in the museum or in the firehouse. It still runs, thanks to Donnie Brightwell. It has spoke wheels made of wood, and it's chain-driven. It's something to see if you get up there to do it. And if you give Donnie enough time, he'll make it pump. In 1954, the fire company members, at that time, purchased the 45-acre farm, which was reduced by eight acres near the carnival grounds when Route 27 bypassed and went through in 1971. 1959, the membership built the Activities Building. 1960, the ball fields. I was playing Little League up here at the school at that time, myself, and I remember the fire company. I don't remember a lot of it. I remember going up and pick up trucks out to Goodyear's lumberyard out there on Buffalo Road to haul sawdust in to spread on the fields. So, that kind of became something that was all built by, I guess, what, there was no mayor back then. It was a lot of the fathers and parents that helped with the kids and look at what was built or made today. When you look at that place, it's very impressive, and it wasn't done all by the fire company. They just said, "Yeah, we use chicken wire for the backstop." In 1980, we built a new kitchen when the Activities Building, in addition, the addition was put on just to house the kitchen. The auxiliary supplied all the equipment in that building for the kitchen. That was their part, and you can't say enough about what the auxiliary does. In 2017, we renovated the reception hall, made it bigger, and that's, will be paid off next year. In 2026, president of the fire company is already formed, is forming a committee. We're going to have to do something with the fire station because of what's going to happen in the future as the volunteers are diminishing, and they hope the county has to take, somebody's got to take over, because we're not going to have the volunteers. However, the Junior Fire Company, and you'll see a lot of young ones up here, that's, has the auxiliary there gaining ground, gaining people. So, the, all this support and volunteers from the families and the local farmers and mechanics and grocers, that's what built that. Nothing came from the town, other than whatever was asked for, but there was nothing asked for. Dependability, the idea of this body accepting to cut the fire company without coming to this meeting and expressing their displeasure couldn't happen. Sorry, we're crowding your streets and using up all your chairs. A group of men and women and children for almost 100 years, as of next year, have provided to the citizens of Mount Airy and surrounding area a property and life-saving service. The fire company and the auxiliary to the Mount Airy Fire Company holds numerous fundraisers during the year to help support the cost of running the fire. You heard what Doug said. We can't do any more. It's just, it's burned out. What their people did Sunday, they're up there doing chicken, doing the chicken dinner. The auxiliary's Friday night. I enjoy them. Somebody's making dinner for us. And I know Mr. Munder's at quite a few of these functions. I see him a lot, and we appreciate everybody that comes out. So, next thing coming is our, well, we've got guidelines, but from an FPA to what's followed when we're buying and forming committees for the purchase of new vehicles. In 2026, at a cost of, and this is the short end of the stick, $990,000 will be spent on a new pumper. I've been treasurer for a long time, and that just boggles my mind that the last one of these was $450,000, and it's over double, and that was 11, or 15 years ago. Our new rescue engine, which should have been replaced in 2022, is going to cost, and I have the contracts that the chief and the president have signed, for $1.5 million. Thinking about the $47,000 you're not going to give us next year scares the stuff out of me. So, what other town department, and not to insult anybody, or organization do you support that delivers a 24/7 service of this magnitude and pays for everything they do? So, everything the fire company has done has not been asked by the town. They've built it. Even the young people today are up there helping with everything we do. It's a great tradition, but I'm concerned seriously about the cost of it. I'm naming off two pieces that, a few years back, or the last time we purchased these two pieces, nowhere near what the cost is. And the sad part about it, we've signed the contracts, and there, it's an open end as to what it's going to cost to finalize that, those particular pieces of equipment. We don't know, and the company can't tell us, and that's going, that's all through the whole industry. So, Mr. Pat Rockenberg, God bless his soul, and the Town Council showed their support approximately five years ago. We put in service for all to use a $1.2 million ladder truck. It's sitting out here up on Center Street. The mayor pledged and gave, this is Pat Rockenberg said, "Okay, here's what the town will do. We'll give you $12,500 for four years, a total of $50,000." That came through every year. There was a line item in the check when it was sent showing us that the money has been promised and delivered. It was listed as a line item, and now today, you are to vote on a budget that will take away $47,000 from next year's allocation. I lost two nights of sleep when I first saw this, read this, and I'm asking, "Please don't do this." You want to take away, it almost looks like, you know, if you play numbers, $12,500, four years, $50,000. And you guys want to take it back. You should have just asked me to write a check and forfeited your donation as a town. The town did that. So, anyway, I said, "Please do not take away our needed money to serve a town." A change from 52 years of consistency. And as mentioned to Mr. Munder, that, "Well, it's nothing in writing." What happened to respect for your previous colleagues? And don't dampen the pride that we all have for our leaders, leaders of the past. I mean, Mr. Hobbs, the ones that were serving in the same position as you are. So, I look at that you gave us, he gave us the $50,000, and you're going to take back. And next year, we're going to be short $47,000. That's no way to go. I want to put in place the dependability we have known from this town forever and ever, that we want to continue to depend. And I do a lot of numbers. And what I don't understand, we have been given by the history of the town, 10% of what real property tax. That's only one-tenth. And what other organization, one-tenth? You don't have to worry about it. You can go to bed at night, and you can dial 911, you do what you need to do, and you don't have to worry your neighbor or anybody else. They're going to be there, and that's been something that's going on. I think Matthew lets you know how many calls there are. That should tell you something. We do have some paid people up there, but they're not taking every piece out the door. They'll get the first three out. The rest of them are up to us as volunteers. So, please don't change the 10%. That's because as a treasurer, I'm working on, especially these two pieces that are going to total $2.5 million at the least, I'm trying to do the calculations on, "Okay, how are we going to pay for this?" Or, "We're going to borrow? We're going to see who's got the best interest rate?" But I'm scared to death that next year, that $47,000 that you're going to take out and the years after, I can't depend on it. You can depend on the fire company. Please, let us depend on you as well. You're very important. You're all running this show, or circus, whatever you're. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. All right, Mr. Terry Baxter and Eddie Godwin.
Baker.
Baker, sir.
I'd refer to Jimmy. He hears up to my five minutes.
Okay.
But I will say this.
Well, if you're going to speak, if you can, just come up today.
All right. My mother would have been here, but she's a Lorian. 1306 South Main Street. I told her what was going on, and she, she was very upset. She was, she said, "What's going on? Why is this happening?" I said, "Mom, I don't know, but maybe something will come out of it." But she was, she was really upset, 97-year-old lady, but she just didn't understand it either. Thank you.
Eddie? What's up?
One minute.
One minute's fine.
Eddie Godwin, 202 Lookout Avenue. I just want to echo what Mr. Linton and Terry have said. This, we really need help with this. We want to be able to help you guys. I enjoy doing this. I do it for free, even though I can go get paid any other day that we can do it for my career. But we really need the support from you guys, and I'm not going to lie, it sucks that it's potentially going to get cut from us. We really count on this. So, I hope you guys can do the right thing for this. Thank you.
Thanks, Eddie. Chief Russo? I believe you're the last one.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Russo. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the fire chief of the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company. I live here, I work here, I volunteer here, I run a business here, my kids go to school here. I'd like to ask the town to reconsider reducing our annual contribution. You heard Mr. Linton speak on the financial aspects of this reduction, and I'm here to bring up the operational concerns that I have that'll be negatively affected. Many of our large purchases were put off because of COVID, the shortages, and the uncertainty. We were finally getting back on track, and this hit will hurt that progress. Specifically, over the last 24 months, we've replaced our chief's car, began replacing aging equipment, and replaced our 15-plus-year-old hose completely for about $100,000 investment so far. Additionally, last August, we signed a contract to purchase two new Seagrave fire trucks to replace our 2011 engine and our 2007 rescue. The cost for both of these pieces, as you heard Mr. Linton say, not including equipment, is $2.5 million. There was a lot of debate when this decision was made because of the large cost. There was discussion to span the rescue service that the MAVFC has provided since 1972. We fought hard against this to continue to provide the same level of service to our community. Our area is unique, as you know. We have the interstate running through here, railroad, commercial, and residential, and we serve four counties, regardless of those boundary lines. It's disheartening to hear that the town is considering to cut the contribution, because we anticipated receiving this money when the decision was made to purchase these two new pieces. We rely heavily on the town's funding to continue to provide the best service possible to our town and surrounding areas. We have a lot of upcoming purchases in the near future to replace our aging fleet and update our 33-year-old building to accommodate our volunteer and career personnel. Any reduction will greatly hurt our ability to continue to update and maintain our equipment. I'm asking that the town please consider providing the MAVFC with the 10% of the tax revenue. The 10% of the tax revenue is a small cost for the value that the MAVFC provides fire protection for. We're here to serve the town and its residents, so we ask you to please continue to support us. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Mayor Hushire?
Generally, we listen to public hearings and don't do a lot of responding. The council's going to be voting on this, so I wouldn't expect them to respond a lot to this, but I do want to address it because you all took the time to come out here. I consider most of you friends, even if you throw tomatoes at me, I'm okay with that. But I support you through the duck race and the Rotary Club and do everything that I can. I eat as much as I can, but I can't eat as much as Carl. So, and the whole council is on your side for this stuff. Let me start by saying that I did send an email to the leadership, and I have it here in front of me, and what I have said is, "If the MAVFC has issues during 2026 fiscal year, you should approach us, and we'll find a way to help you." So, I did put $200,000 in the budget, but if you guys have a list of items that you need, if you're willing to come to us, show us your book, show us where the shortfall is, we can do an amendment, and we can provide more funding for you, and we're willing to do that. My problem is that I raised taxes last year, the council votes on it, so I just suggested it. But the taxes were raised because we need a police station. That is our need right now. The increase in tax revenue that was received because of that increase in taxes is all going toward building a police station. And by the way, the police department didn't have anything to do with that. That was, that was me and the council who were working down that. So, we're in a position where we're trying to get a bond bill that will build out this police station, and we're looking, we looked for the property, we've signed a purchase agreement on land, and so we're in a pickle, too. And I raised taxes based on a police station. So, what I have asked is that you guys take a hit so that I can keep this money going toward a police station, and the revenue that was taken away from you is going directly to the police station. Okay? So, I understand that you guys have incredible expenses, and that's what we found out on our tour. If you, if you need more money, we're going to find more money and give it to you. For budget purposes, I feel pretty firm that $200,000, which is a round number with no questions asked, it's a check cut to you, and however you spend it, you're going to spend it, which is great. If you need more than that, come back to us and show us, and we'll do what we have to do to make that right. So, that's my feeling on it. It's a tough decision. I know it's not a popular one, but again, I have left that door open for you guys to come back to us if you need something. And I greatly appreciate all the fire trucks outside, because that's pretty cool. And I appreciate everything that you do for the town, and we're going to support your fundraisers, and I already volunteered Tim to get in the dunk tank for you at the carnival, so, I mean, whatever we.
I'll sign that. So.
Why is Eddie throwing the baseballs?
Yeah. And I know, the council votes on the budget, so we'll see where they go during the discussion at that point. As a mayor, trying to get things done for the entire town, there's a lot of expenses in the world of public safety, and one of them is fully funding our police department, too, so that we can, we can stop kicking a can down the road on a rental building and actually build something. So, you may not agree with me, I just hope you understand my position. So, thank you.
Is it possible for me to ask one question? Mr. Linton, do you mind if I just ask you a quick question? You're the money guy and the numbers guy, and this is just out of sheer ignorance on my end. It's a legitimate question. When you look at other towns, right, we're given, we have to make decisions based on the information we're given. So, I'm going to read off a few things. Hampstead, $40,000. Manchester, $30,000. New Windsor, $20,000. Sykesville, $15,000. Tannetown, $25,000, that's on the Carroll side. Frederick side. Brunswick, $15,000 plus utilities. Emmitsburg, $6,000. Frederick, zero. Middletown, $20,000. Myersville, $6,500. New Market, $8,000. Rosemont, $6,000. Walkersville, $30,000. Woodsboro, zero, but looking forward to it next year. Mount Airy, $200,000. Those are donations given to all the different towns. Those are donations given to all the different towns to their fire companies. So I guess my question is, how are they operable?
Are they what?
How are they able to operate?
They don't operate.
They're giving a one to two percent, and, and it's a, it's a legit, I'm not trying to.
Yeah.
Because I just don't know, so that's what I'm asking.
That's great. There's.
If you look at those numbers, it just, it's like you said, you know, the closest one is Westminster, they're a town of fifty-two thousand, and Westminster gives a hundred and twenty-five.
Okay.
We're a town of ten thousand that gives two hundred. So I'm, and, and it's a legitimate question, I'm just wondering.
It's legitimate, it's not something I want to, uh, Westminster's an interesting case, and I'm not going to do it publicly as to what, why. Yeah, I mean, Westminster City itself, before we had paid people at all, Westminster paid their employees, the fire service. I'm not sure how many it was, if it was one or two, but they had people on payroll at that time. And now because they don't, the county has picked up that particular part of it. But as far as those other towns, uh, they're not supplying the service that we have. I think you saw from the tour, the equipment and what we have, and as the chief mentioned, interstate's a very tricky area that we have to deal with. Uh, we do it, we share it with New Market. We had the first rescue squad in the entire area. Uh, New Market became, had one here not recently, bought a used one, and they're supposedly getting out of the service of the rescue. So it's something that we've taken more money. Why these other towns don't support what they, uh, should be supporting, I cannot answer that question legitimately and tell you what, why, where, and how. As I tell them at the budget meetings, you know, Mount Airy's a great town, you know, they'd rather move here than we move, we're not moving to those towns. They don't give enough money. But, uh, but I, I think the part that's, since it's only, out of ten, there's only one thing, ten percent. You know, that, it's, it's, and I'm not trying to tell you what you don't know.
No, I understand.
But it's, it's ten percent is all out of the, if I'm, if I'm handling your budget, and I've got ten items that I have to deal with and work with, but I got one that I don't even have to worry about. It's not even a, you know, you're supplying the money, and we greatly appreciate that. But what's not happening is you don't have to, you're asking us to bring what we need or come and ask you. Well, that's an insult. Uh, no, no disrespect, it's nice of you to offer, but that's why we're here tonight. Don't cut this stuff and we won't have to come bother you and bring the books or whatever you want to look at, and you're not going to be able to figure it out. I've been trying to figure it out for forty-seven years as treasurer. So, but to answer your question as far as the other communities, you know, I don't know what they do or what they don't do. I deserve with a lot of the treasures on our county budget, and, uh, some of them are just not into it, or they don't like the fire company. Mount Airy likes the fire company, or they used to, tonight.
Still do.
So, well, it's, words are, I think somebody said, Doug said, action's better than some word, but, no, I, I can't, you know, I could look into it at our next.
I don't need you to do that.
Our budget meeting.
It's just, when you look at the, you know, when, I, I just, I was just wondering how they're still operable, that's all.
That's, well, they're, they don't have, you go visit those fire companies and look at the, uh, the equipment and, and, and what they are having to supply. That heavy rescue, or it's not called the heavy, but air rescue unit that deals with what we come up with on Interstate Seventy is, uh, it's got to be a top, not run piece, and if things are rusting underneath right now, dropping in the firehouse, the rust, so it, it's where we're going.
All right. Thank you very much, Jimmy, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll only take ten seconds to, to follow in on that.
We're fifteen minutes late.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I wanted to give you guys time to talk.
Just real quick about that as well, uh, we're not going to talk about our neighboring fire companies in terms of their equipment or their, their area, um, but Mount Airy is the cream of the crop. When I'm talking about Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company in terms of equipment, with the exception of maybe Sykesville, there is no company of the ones that you listed that offers all the services to the degree that we do, that keeps on top of, you know, like I said, the condition, the, the equipment that is carried on it. Again, we have the best of the best. We don't have to worry about buying used apparatus that is twenty years old with a hundred seventy-five thousand miles on it and figuring out, is it going to be in service? Uh, I, we didn't have a lot of time, so that's one of the things I kept out. We know that this apparatus is going to take four years to come in, so in area, in preparing for that, because we know this rescue squad that we currently have is going to be placed out of service due to the rust on the frame, we are keeping our second engine to prepare for that at an additional cost to us. So we're looking forward to that. As, as the fire chief, I'll be honest with you, I'm not a politician, this is, this is the worst part about the job, I don't like answering emails, I don't like coming to these meetings, but it's something that you have to do. I'm a fireman at the end of the day, and my number one concern is, are we going to have something that's available should the worst-case scenario happen? Which it does, it has happened in the last couple of months where we've had every piece go out of service. I know it doesn't sound like it's possible. All three pieces go out of service and we have to borrow one from one of our neighbors. Our equipment does not compare to our neighbors and all those towns you listed. Similarly, if you drove through most of those towns that you mentioned, they're not on the scale that Mount Airy is. And if you wonder what I'm saying by that, they call Mount Airy, you know, the hallmark city, the hallmark town. They're not on the same, I mean, you know, again, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but drive through Union Bridge, drive through New Windsor, drive through Tannity Town, and then drive through Mount Airy, and I'm proud of that. I think we should, all should be proud of that. It's a desirable place to live, it's a desirable place to be a fireman, so those are some of the reasons why it's, in my mind, not, you know, it's not apples to oranges.
So we offer different services than what those companies could offer?
Yeah, like I said, with the exception of Sykesville, who is somewhat comparable, obviously the town's a little bit different, but we offer a, uh, engine, a rescue, a ladder truck, a tanker, brush truck, and endless support vehicles that I could go on about. We offer pretty much every service that you can physically think of, with the exception of like a, a dive boat. We, we, we can handle any emergency that comes through that, and we take pride in that. That's something that they, a hundred years ago, took pride in, and that's something that, uh, I fought for as the fire chief. I was not going to reduce this rescue service because some of our neighbors have that, where they have an engine with a couple of tools on it, and we always say it's enough to get in trouble. It's not enough to get the job done. Um, you know, we, we just did our rescue demonstration down at the, uh, carnival grounds, and it's coming up on prom season and homecoming season. I cannot tell you how many of our own children, our own, you know, kids that were cutting out of these cars, and thank God, knock on wood, we haven't had anything fatal happen in a while, but we have to be prepared for those incidents. We have these areas, we have CSX, we have Seventy, we have high-speed roads, and, uh, regardless of what happens, and, you know, maybe I shouldn't say this, regardless of what happens with the money, we're going to, as we always do, we're going to find a way to make it work, and we refuse to reduce that service, so we're proud of that.
Thank you, Chief, I appreciate the answer. And again, I was just.
You shouldn't have said that.
Let's strike that. But thank you guys very much. Anyone else wish to speak? Please say no. All right, at this time, we will go ahead and close the public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash five to adopt the budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and we will go immediately into our council meeting. I want to thank everybody for coming out, um, and showing your support for the fire company. It was good to see everybody here, so thank you, guys. Give us like a two-minute break, let everyone move around, and then we'll, uh, we'll get started right away. The date is May fifth, twenty twenty-five, the time is, uh, well, seven fifty-one. I will now call this Mount Airy Town Council Meeting to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance and to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll begin by apologizing that we're starting late. Uh, we had a public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash five, and, uh, it was rather important to let the speaker speak and, and give them enough time to, to get their points across, so I was not going to cut them short. Um, so we will do our best to catch up. I would ask that when we get to our, um, when the council gets to its reports, just please stick to highlights and action items only, and maybe we can, uh, catch up that way. Um, I will go ahead and move on to presentations, and I will relinquish to Mayor Hushour.
Test, test. All right, so what we have is a proclamation declaring May fourth through tenth of twenty twenty-five as Public Service Recognition Week. Uh, Councilmember DeMoto drafted this, I'm going to let him say a few words, and then I'll read the proclamation. Thanks.
All right, well, thank you, good evening, everyone. So, so first I want to say, um, thank you to the mayor and to Council President Washaba. Um, this is the second year we've done this. I came to them last year and I said, you know, there is this National Public Service Recognition Week, and I think it's important for our town to be part of this national recognition. I think it's important for our town and for our public servants. So, um, you know, our, our firefighters, our police officers, our municipal employees, all the way up to county employees, state employees, and federal public servants, they are the ones that provide the services that are essential to our daily lives. So, um, they're what keeps the towns running and the cities running and the states running. Uh, we also want to especially think about our federal public servants because, um, they are going, they are displaying resiliency because they are going through some, uh, government reorganization and cost-cutting kind of scenarios, so we appreciate their service and resiliency as they work through that process. So we want to thank all of our public servants, both within our town, government, but also broadly across our town that do everything they do for us. So I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Hushour, um, for the proclamation, and maybe we might have a, a photo. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas National Public Service Recognition Week is celebrated on the first week of May since nineteen eighty-five to honor the people who serve our nation as federal, state, county, local, and tribal government employees. Whereas the town of Mount Airy values public service as a noble calling and wishes to recognize all public servants who are the unsung heroes in providing the services that are essential to our citizens' daily lives and that keep our Mount Airy community safe, functioning, and thriving. Whereas the town of Mount Airy thanks our government, public servants, for dedicating their time, skills, and service to our community, often going beyond the call of duty. Whereas it is with grateful appreciation that the town of Mount Airy especially thanks our municipal public servants for all they do for the town that we call home. Now therefore, the mayor and town council of the town of Mount Airy, Maryland do hereby proclaim May fourth through May tenth, twenty twenty-five, as Public Service Recognition Week, and rec, and encourage all citizens to especially recognize and admire the dedication accomplishments and tireless efforts of our public service. That's it. Thank you. So, and we'll hang this up by the front door so we can all read it on the way out. So, uh, is someone willing to take a picture?
Well, just the mayor and council member DeMoto.
Well, we can get us up here, council, quick.
Are there any public servants in the audience tonight?
All of us.
So we, so we all just get up?
Hey, we all come up.
Mr. McCarron, you should come up here too.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I can stay behind you.
Come on, guys.
They're hiding, trying to get out.
All right, all right. Carl, a lot of those chicken dinners are showing.
Oh, there they are.
All right, here we go, I'm going to take a couple, so one, two, three, and one more. On three, one, two, three. Got it.
Use the first one, I'm sliding, next one, please.
All right, thank you very much to mayor and councilmember DeMoto, and all of our public service folks. Uh, next up, we have public comment. Anyone, anyone in the audience, audience wish to speak? Mr. Walls, go ahead.
So we are hoping now that people are, um, aware that there are writing candidates, that we will have a better turnout of individuals wishing to express their views as far as individuals running for the various positions. So please come out and vote, it's your right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for a big day that you have tomorrow. Mr. Gant?
Ralph Gant, Ralph Gant, town resident of the Nottingham community. I started my question. It's not worth it.
How about now? There we go. Ralph Gant, town resident of the Nottingham community and also the volunteer chair of the town, uh, planning commission. And in that capacity, I just quickly wanted to give thanks to two council members that are here tonight. Uh, first, uh, councilmember Galetti, I believe this may be your last official meeting, and so from the planning commission, we want to extend our gratitude for your service as a councilperson and for your liaison duties to various commissions, Parks and Recs, beautification, uh, the Flatiron Task Force. Been very busy, and certainly, without a doubt, you stepped into the arena, and, um, we're better for, for your service. So thank you very much. I also want to thank, uh, councilmember, uh, Evans. As you know, the mayor assigns council liaisons to each of the volunteer commissions. Uh, councilmember Evans has been our liaison for quite some time, and, uh, I hope it was a good partnership. We, we, we thoroughly enjoyed working with you, you had the right touch to kind of maneuver us through various difficulties, the major challenge, the master plan this year. So really, with heartfelt gratitude from all the commissioners, we want to thank you for your service to us also. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ralph. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir. How are you, Charlie?
I'm Charlie Mansfield, and, uh, I'd like to, uh, I know the fire department did a great job in presenting their case to you all, uh, but I would like to offer my support for them. Um, as you know, the fire department, uh, does work way beyond the town of Mount Airy, and we've been, uh, benef- beneficiaries of their, uh, their work, uh, over this last couple of years. So we really appreciate that. And, uh, so I'd like to, um, recommend that you all, uh, do come up with a way to come up with funding, um, at least to the level as what they have been receiving in the past. And also, uh, I don't, I don't know your, you know, how you interact with other towns, but if it does seem like other town, uh, who also receive help from the Mount Airy Fire Department, um, if you could, uh, you know, do some outreach to those other towns and convince them to provide, uh, uh, support for them, um, especially in this time of significant need that they have with the fire engines that are, you know, becoming, as they would say, obsolete. So just those couple of recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Next up, uh, we don't have any speakers tonight, so we'll go on to approval of council meeting minutes and closed minutes and other related. So first up, we have the April twenty twenty-five town council meeting minutes. I'll make a motion to. I'll make a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, discussion. If you look at the second page, under ordinances and resolutions, the last one, ordinance 2025-6, this is to amend the election code. It says, "Vote all in favor." I want to remind everybody, I abstained on that ordinance because of my candidacy for reelection.
All right, so we'll make an amendment, table amendment, just to change "all in favor" to "for yes" and "one abstention." All right. So any further discussion? All right, "all in favor" to approve the 2025 council meeting minutes with the amendment to change "vote all in favor" to "for yes" and "one abstention." Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Next up, April 2025 public hearing minutes for ordinance 2025-2, the municipal bond issuance for the land acquisition, design, engineering, construction of Mount Airy Police Station. I'll make a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? "All in favor" to approve April 2025 public hearing minutes for ordinance 2025-2. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. April 2025 closed meeting minutes, subject was Town Hall. I will make a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none. "All in favor" approving the April 2025 closed meeting minutes under the subject of Town Hall. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. April 2025 closed meeting minutes, the subject was land acquisition. I will make a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none. "All in favor" approving April 2025 closed meeting minutes for subject land acquisition. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A lot of meetings. Next up, April 2025 closed meeting minutes, subject line litigation. Do we have a motion? Or I'm sorry, I will make a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, hearing none. "All in favor" approving the closed meeting minutes for April 2025 under litigation. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And last but not least, April 23rd, 2025 closed meeting minutes, the subject salaries and personal issues with regards to the fiscal year 2526 budget. I'll make a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. "All in favor" approving April 23rd, 2025 closed meeting minutes under fiscal year 2526 salaries and personnel issues. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, got through those quick. Next up, Civil Air Patrol report with Captain Picar. I believe he...
Captain Picar is not here tonight. Lieutenant Lavelle is taking over for the cap, and she's not here tonight. She'll be here next month.
Okay, I do believe we all got an email, though, with his report. Okay. All right, next up, the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company report, Mr. Matt Hurd.
Good evening, everyone. We were pretty busy last month. We had 211 calls, 136 in Carroll, 67 in Frederick, seven in Howard, and one in Montgomery. For the in-town box errors, box 113, we had 38 EMS, one fire. Box 114, six EMS. Box 111, 17 EMS, seven fire. Box 115, 14 EMS and two fire. The Express Care had seven EMS. Box 13, 10 EMS, one fire. Box 14, 10 EMS and two fire. And box 15, we had six EMS. Thank you, guys, for coming out for our auxiliary dinner on Friday. And Sunday, we had our big chicken dinner. We sold out within an hour and a half. We opened up kind of early, but we sold out 160 dinners. So thank you, guys, for supporting us, the town, showed up in carloads. So we appreciate that. The 18th of May, we have our big country breakfast again, so please come on and support the fire company. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much, Matt. Next up, we have our Mount Airy Police Department report with Chief Ginevra.
Good evening, everybody. For calls for service for the month of April, we had 711 calls. It was an increase of call volume of almost 31% compared to April of 2024, April of 2024, with 543. Again, just a reminder, just because of the call volume, the level's going up. Again, these are with self-initiated calls that the officers put themselves on. Happy to report that the town had no overdoses for the month of April. For recruitment section, we are currently processing five entry-level applications, myself and Lieutenant Hopkins, and we are currently processing one part-time applicant for the evidence property technician, which has been open for quite some time. I'd like to acknowledge, I know I did it last month, too. The mayor had brought it up there last month, but on April 3rd, Officer First Class Gregory Gebhardt was awarded for MAPD's Officer of the Year for his outstanding work that he's contributed to, again, the full years of service for that. That was recognized on the Frederick County side. And also with Officer Brandon Wright was awarded on April 23rd in my absence. Lieutenant Hopkins was able to attend that. He was awarded for Traffic Safety Specialist Level 2. There are other attachments that are also in my report with our monthly traffic initiative that, again, it's any of the calls that we have for complaints for traffic volume and stuff like that. Also, for some events, to all those wonderful mothers that are out there, the Mother's Day, May 11th, so I wish everyone a happy Mother's Day. Memorial Day for May 26th, and then again, with going into the month of June, the June 2nd through the 7th, we have the Four Counties Lions Carnival over at the carnival grounds. So again, that's our wonderful event that we're having. There will be fireworks. The fireworks will be on the 6th, and they do have it posted for the rain date on the 7th. And all of Mount Airy's officers will be there for that event to help out. So, does anyone have any questions? I tried to keep it brief, sir.
Questions? All right, thank you very much, chief.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Very quick. Chief, your officers do an outstanding job. I love the surveillance reports you give for traffic safety. If you look on page three, I would just ask a little administrative request.
Sure.
So on page three at the bottom, it says, "roadways in red above indicate complaints received since last initiative." And we get this report in black and white.
Correct.
So if you can use a different annotation, instead of red, underline or do something so that...
I will make sure that Sergeant Brooks has that information, but just as a note, there isn't anything in red for any complaints for that.
Okay, very good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, thank you, chief. All right, we're up to our mayor, council, and staff reports. I'll begin with the mayor's report, Mayor Hushour.
All right, I'll start by saying happy birthday, Carl.
Happy birthday.
What a great way to spend your birthday. I can't believe you're younger with all that gray here, but I don't have any hair to compare by. Second of all, Lynn, you've done a great job on the council, and we're going to miss you. So especially amongst all these thorns, you were certainly the rose, and we're going to miss that. So thanks for all that you have done for us. The American Legion will be having their Memorial Day service on May 26th. I don't have a time. It's normally 11 o'clock. It's going to be indoor at the American Legion. Matt, did you have the time?
No, I didn't. No, I don't have it.
Okay, but it is May 26th, so again, indoors, just in case we get rain or shine. It'll be a...
The on-road guys can't upset about it.
Who is?
The on-road guys can't upset about it.
Well, I hear you. So I'm going to go where the service is. How about that? Okay, all right. And outside of that, I'll just keep it short because that's enough for tonight.
All right, next up, we have our Recreation and Parks Board, Beautification Commission, and Flatiron Task Force with Council Secretary Galetti for the last time.
Thank you. Yeah, I actually forgot that I actually have to attend those meetings in May when I said to the mayor, "I'm done after Monday, Cinco de Mayo." Nope, not done. So Parks and Rec met on the 17th, and the Play Place repairs are being made by town staff over at Watkins Park. There is a fitness meetup at Watkins Park at 5:30 a.m. every day. And if you ever want to, if you miss Parks and Rec, it is recorded on Facebook. They're virtual. You can listen to it in your car. You can re-watch it. So go look for it on the town website. The bathrooms at Watkins Park have been opened. The Gaga Pit at Watkins Park has been completed. The Eagle Scout Project for birdhouses is underway, and Windy Ridge Trail signs are being designed to be presented to Parks and Rec. So the next meeting is the third Thursday of this month coming up. And then upcoming events, farmer's market starts this week, May 7th. So at Watkins Park, there's new signage for the market that's going to be installed at some point. Thank you to the local businesses who donated to get those signs. There's bowling for St. Jude's Children's Hospital on May 16th, 6 to 8, at the Mount Airy Bowling Lanes. Ice block sledding, that's huge. Did you guys do that last year? Carl was on a block of ice, weren't you?
Not last year, but the year...
I want to see that. I want to see Carl in a block of ice. So ice sledding, that'll be on May 17th, 11:30 at Watkins Park. And the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company, their Big Country Breakfast buffet on the 18th from 7:30 to 11:00. Can you throw in some fried chicken and get Carl over there, Matt?
While he's ice sledding.
While he's ice sledding. And their meeting is the third Thursday of the month coming up, virtual. And beautification, that meeting was canceled, so the next meeting is Tuesday, May 20th, at Town Hall at 7 o'clock. And then Flatiron, a lot going on with the Flatiron. They met on the 22nd at Town Hall to talk about the architect plans. The mayor met with the architect, and I was there virtually. They're working on fundraising and grants, ton of grants over, we did get $250,000 award, and I'm reading from the mayor's notes. So 250,000 awarded from the Carroll delegation. So thank you to our elected officials in Carroll County. They are, I got to say it, the town staff is phenomenal. She probably doesn't want me to say her name. So the person that does the grants right now has over $3 million out alone just for the Flatiron building.
Great job, Ashley.
So Ashley, he did it. I'm doing it. Thank you so much. She likes to fly under the radar, but we're running her, apparently not in her town, no. So she's working nonstop, and they're time-consuming, but she's got it going on. And I'm kind of proud of the fact that when I supported the numerous amount of citizens that came in and wanted to save the Flatiron from some council members who wanted to tear it down a few years ago, they are walking the walk and they're talking the talk. Their skin is in the game, and they haven't gone away. And the Flatiron Task Force is still going strong. They're meeting regularly. They are now kicking up the fundraisers, and the first lady will kill me if I don't remind you all of this coming up. Monday, June 16th is all-day fundraiser for the Flatiron at Siempri Day Fiesta, and Monday, August 11th, all-day at JMP. And again, thank you to local businesses for supporting the Historical Society and the Flatiron Task Force and numerous people that want to see this happen. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have the Planning Commission with Councilmember Evans.
Okay, Planning Commission meeting on April 28th. The Frederick County Liaison, brought to our attention, Cherry Run, is on the agenda for the May 14th Planning Commission. And that includes 1,010 homes and an elementary school at Winchester Hall at 9:30 a.m. The Carroll County Liaison has still not been appointed to us, so there was small report, but nothing of detail. We discussed a couple of different things, simplified process for the site plan with some support from the Planning Commission to move forward with it, and then food truck regulations was discussed as well, which had some support and some contention on that. Next Planning Commission meeting is May 19th because of the Memorial Day holiday, and that concludes my report.
Sure. Yeah, I just want to recognize Anthony out there from Walkers on Main. Thanks for coming to the meeting tonight. I heard today that you got tater tots out there. So I'm pretty excited about getting down there. So, yeah, we know about the smash burgers, but every time we talk about those, Carl diverts away from the fire company. So anyway, it's good to have you here.
Well, thank you, but you've only been downtown for maybe a week or so, so I haven't been down there yet. But I have hit the restaurant in Glenwood, so, okay. You're welcome.
Next up, we have our, oh, sorry, Jason, were you done?
Yes.
Next up, we have our Streets and Roads Commission and EDC with Councilmember DeMoto.
All right, thank you. EDC last met on March 26th. Since that time, planning is underway for the Small Business Roundtable Information Exchange that we anticipate will be held sometime this fall. A reminder, its purpose is to exchange information on business successes, challenges, and assistance opportunities with the town. And on that front, I am continuing to work with an EDC volunteer who is also a member of the Mount Airy Chamber of Commerce. That was part of our objective, is to get other organizations tied in. We're going to also talk to MAMSA about that as well, and I'm coordinating with the town to advance this initiative. Our next EDC meeting is on May 28th. Moving to Streets and Roads, we last met on March 25th. Since that meeting, the commission working with the town supported and participated in the Teen Driver Event, which was held on April 12th, hosted by Sherri Cates State Farm Insurance. From my standpoint, the event was a huge success, and I reached back to Sherri Cates to get some, see if they had any attendance data. They estimate they had over 300 attendees because they counted the number of people who did the drunk goggles golf course. So 300 attendees, and not just from Maryland, we had people from as far away as New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and West Virginia. So it was a great event. They're looking at next year, maybe moving it back a week to make sure we have a good weather window. And again, it was a great opportunity for the teen drivers and their parents to gain some confidence in safe driving because with confidence comes safety on the road. Our next meeting is scheduled for May 27th, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have the Recycling and Sanitation Commission and Sustainability Commission with Councilmember Munder.
All right, there was no Recycling and Sanitation Commission meeting in the month of April, excuse me, but we did hold the shred event on April 19th. I'm glad to report we had approximately 9,800 pounds of recycled, not recycled, shredded material in the truck, which equates to about a full truck. The next meeting for the recycling sanitation is this month, 5/21, so please check the website to make sure it is still going on. It should be at 7:00 p.m. here at Town Hall. The Mount Airy Sustainability Commission met in April, April 16th. They discussed several things, a couple of things that I would like to mention, that if anyone wants to adopt a road here in town, please, for cleanup events for a year, please contact Town Hall. There are still several roads available. And I would also like to say that the Sustainability Commission is in the process of developing a bike trail map here in town to better inform people how to get around town and to ride their bikes into town and to town locations. So the next meeting is June 18th at 7:00 p.m. here in Town Hall. Just like to also say one thing, the town's bulk trash pickup, curbside, is upcoming on May 10th, which is a Saturday. So please have out two items outside by curb by 6:00 a.m., and please check on the town's website for what is accepted and what is not accepted. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, we have the Water and Sewer Commission and the Commission on Aging and Livability, otherwise known as COE, with myself. The Water and Sewer Commission usually meets on the first Wednesday of every month, so we haven't had that meeting yet. Dick, I want to say this month is actually canceled, though. Is that correct? Okay. Yeah, so there will be no meeting this month for May 7th. The next Water and Sewer Commission will be on June 4th here at Town Hall. For the COE meeting, I actually wanted to attend via phone call because I wasn't able to be in person, and we were having some kind of connectivity issues. I do know that we had some visitors, a special presentation here, but I was in and out on the phone call, so I couldn't really hear it. I don't know if you just have any, like a quick thing?
Yeah, it was a local business. It's up at the end of Center Street that provides exercises, that sort of stuff, that was of interest or in a nature that would serve seniors really well, and they do groups. And unfortunately, I don't have their name with me here tonight. But as well as talking about that, and again, Tim was on the phone, so I'm not sure what all he heard. But we also worked on the cross-county transportation issue, trying to figure that out. And then they talked about other policies that they're trying to get established. Very cool. Very cool.
And that's my mistake, it was a very bad connection where I was, so, thank you very much for filling in. All right, next up, we have the Town Attorney Report, Mr. Tom McCarron.
Just a couple of quick items. First, the town has now acquired the remaining piece of property for the roundabout. Many thanks to Debbie Clinton, who really worked hard to get those documents recorded after the closing. So, we have that sort of final piece in place. Worked on the final piece of the Antietam PWA, which is on the agenda later. Assisted with ordinances, resolutions on the agenda, and also attended the Planning Commission meeting and provided general advice throughout, to the town throughout the month as needed. And that's my report.
All right, thank you. We all have Town Administrator Report, the Code Enforcement Report, and the Zoning Administrator Report. You guys have anything else to add at all?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Onto new business, a few just quick reminders. May 14th, we have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission relating to the rezoning recommendations as adopted in the 2023 Comprehensive Master Plan. That will begin at 6:00 p.m. here at Town Hall. So, if you're interested in those rezonings, please attend on May 14th. Also, May 19th, there's a swearing-in ceremony and special town council meeting at 6:00 p.m., also here at Town Hall. This will be swearing in the elected officials from tomorrow's election, and then voting on, as a council, the new council president and council secretary. Next up, we have a road closure for Tuesday, July 1st, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. For the American Spirit Parade, Main Street from West Watersville Road and Cottonwood Avenue to Park Avenue, Park Avenue to Twin Arch Road. It has Nancy Hernandez, she here? Hi Nancy, how are you?
It's pretty much the same as last year.
Easy enough. Anyone have any questions? All right, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion for the council to approve the road closure as described in our information packet related to the American Spirit Parade on July 1st, 2025.
I will second that motion, since I will be out there catching candy from you all.
Do we have any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor of a road closure on Tuesday, July 1st, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. For the American Spirit Parade, Main Street from West Watersville Road and Cottonwood Avenue to Park Avenue, Park Avenue to Twin Arch Road, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and can I just also say thank you to Lynn? She has been a wonderful liaison for Parks and Rec, and we're really going to miss her.
Thank you very much.
I have to say thank you to her for evenings, weekends, that she just works nonstop, so we're lucky to have her.
Agreed. All right, next up, we have another road closure for Saturday, September 27th, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for Oktoberfest, Main Street from Prospect Road to Paradise Avenue. And this has Ms. Kelly Patrick with MAMSA.
We do the same thing every year, kind of like Nancy said.
Same as last year as well?
Yep, it'll be the same.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Patrick or MAMSA?
Don't go away, though.
I won't, I'll stay right here.
All right, I'll make.
She loves doing that.
I'll make a motion to approve the road closure for Saturday, September 27th, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for Oktoberfest. This will go from Main Street from Prospect Road to Paradise Avenue. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the road closure Saturday, September 27th, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. For Oktoberfest, from Main Street from Prospect Road to Paradise Avenue, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so, my question is, you were talking about something to do with the liquor license. Can you explain that?
I can, so I need the council to agree to the resolution, I guess to allow the alcohol throughout, which we've done in prior years as well. The alcohol permit typically goes through Carroll County for approval, well, historically it has. This year, they're requiring the state to approve it, so there's a different form. It's not part of the packet, but it was submitted to be part. However, I'll bring it in tomorrow, as long as that's okay.
I see it as a resolution.
Yes.
So, it is on there.
Okay.
So, as long as the council approves it, I can sign your, your form.
Okay, yeah, I just have to give it to the state instead of to the county. That's why I'm here so early this year. Because I don't know with the state what to expect as far as timeframes. In case I mess anything up, I want time to fix it.
All right, all right. Just wanted to give you a chance, let me make the resolution go faster. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
That's not something we're going to do, is that for next month?
No, it's, it's, it's in the, it's Resolution 25-2.
Oh, it's in here, okay.
I was trying to get it all done today, if that's.
No, no, the only thing is, she, there was a form that goes along with it, and the form is not in our package. But if you approve the resolution, then I can sign the form.
All right, perfect, all right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, I'm good. Thanks, guys, I appreciate it.
Couldn't imagine what would happen to us if you weren't good for Oktoberfest. Next up, we have a recommendation for award for construction for the South Main Street Roundabout Rebid. I'll relinquish to Mr. Barney Quinn.
Thank you. So, these next two items for the roundabout and for the feed cable upgrade, kind of rely a little bit on some, some changes with the, with the budget and the way we have it written. So, I just wanted to, I didn't know if you wanted to go through the other things first before we do these recommendations, or?
Yeah, what we can do is we'll just, I guess what we can do is just, we'll go down to ordinances, resolutions, go through that, and then we'll come back up to, to new business. Because we can't award the rebid without having the money in place first.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Does that make sense? Staff says that makes sense.
All right. So, we will come back to that, and then we also have a recommendation for award for the water station number one feed cable conduit upgrade for Wells 2 and 4 project. We will also come back to that after we get through the budget amendments down in our ordinance and resolution section. All right, next up, we have commission appointments and reappointments with Mayor Hushour.
Okay, thanks. First appointment is Diane Lowe to be appointed to Recycling and Sanitation Commission.
I make the recommendation for the council to approve Diane Lowe to the Recycling and Sanitation Commission.
I'll second, any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor of appointing Diane Lowe to the Recycling and Sanitation Commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
All right, the next are reappointments, I'll try to do them at one time to save 30 seconds. Peter Helt to be reappointed to Board of Appeals. Richard Dye to be reappointed to the Ethics Commission as an alternate. And Larry Black to be reappointed to the Mount Arrie Sustainability Commission.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve Peter Helt to be reappointed to the Board of Appeals. Richard Dye to be reappointed to the Ethics Commission as an alternate. And Larry Black to be reappointed as the Mount Arrie, to the Mount Arrie Sustainability Commission. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of reappointing all three individuals, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. All right, we are now into our ordinances and resolutions. First up, we have Ordinance 2025-4 to set tax rates for fiscal year 2526. This is for adoption. I will make a motion to adopt, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll just point out that the tax rate is the same as it was last year, so no change.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor to adopt Ordinance 2025-4 to set tax rates for fiscal year 2526, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Next up, Ordinance 2025-5 to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2526, this is for adoption. All right, I will make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2025-5 to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2526. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion?
Okay, so this is where we would make any amendments to accommodate the awards.
To, I know, yeah, we can do a table amendment.
Yeah.
Right, yep. Perfect. All right.
Time for discussion.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to talk through the budget a bit. I think overall, we've, we've done a good job with the budget. Just, just some, some of my thoughts, I think, I think the number one, one of the key priorities of, of any government is to provide for the safety and security of their constituents. So, I always look for, for safety and infrastructure as, as priorities when I'm, when I'm looking at a budget. I've, I've heard the conversations and the comments from the fire department. You heard them say, last, last August, I reached out to them, and I, I, they were very gracious in giving me a tour of the fire department. I learned a great deal about their operations, their challenges, their needs. And then at our budget workshop, I, if you recall, I made some comments that I did question the decision to reduce the town's contribution to the fire company. And I wanted to at least keep it stable at the amount that it was last year. And if we use the formula that we have been using, we, we would be giving them $247,000, not $200,000, as they pointed out. I've thought a lot about this, and I think, just for me, it's, it's a fairness issue, it's a respect issue. I truly believe that we should be having the same kind of a workshop with the fire department as we do with the police station, where we sit down with them, and they go item by item what their, their needs are and their challenges, and then we can understand that and decide what our budget contribution is. And to me, that's good governance, that's the process. And that way, we know what our money is going towards. I understand that we give them $200,000, and yes, on the surface, it looks like a great contribution, but it's true, it's just a relative comparison to other towns. It's not based on any kind of a needs assessment per se. So, I, I think on the fire department, we, we need to find a way to make them whole for this, this budget year. And so, this may not be the right time, or maybe it is. I, I will be making an amendment to the budget to add $47,000 to the fire department's stipend, if you will, with that $47,000 coming from the reserves. That would be my going in thought on how to handle that. And those are some thoughts.
So, just make sure we got the logistics right. So, we're starting out with a budget amendment, that you're, you're, you are making a motion to amend the budget by 47,000 for the fire company. Is that, is that what you're doing?
If this is the right time, yes, I, I would like to make.
Do we take these amendments one at a time?
Yeah.
Tom, does that?
So, the original movement has to accept the proposed amendment, and then that has to get a second. And then the question then will be on the table is as to the approval of the budget with said amendment.
Right, but what if there's a second amendment that, that deals with the traffic circle and all that?
There's got to be three totally.
Yeah, I think that should be done.
Separately, yeah. Okay, all right, so right now, you're making a motion to amend the budget by 47,000, and it's got to be seconded.
I would, on the original movement. Movement, I would be having to accept all three of these motions, correct?
Individually.
And then reseconded?
Yes.
Can we have discussion before it's accepted, as far as Steve's request?
I mean, you can do it if you want, you're running the meeting, and you're the council president, so.
Well, I like that. So, we're, we're going to go and have a discussion then. So, I, it's hard, right? It's, it's a, it's a tough call. I, I, I hear both sides. So, I will just ask the mayor, as far as, as far as that motion, you know, what are your thoughts on pulling reserves? And I know Katie's here too, thankfully, so we can kind of see what this would do. Or, you know, I hate pulling from reserves, I'm, I'm going to be bluntly honest. We've done that for 17 years. We've gone from a huge surplus to almost being insolvent. And I, and I don't like doing it, because we don't have a way to put money back into reserves. So, we're going to go from giving 247,000 to not being able to give anything. So, I don't necessarily know if I like pulling from reserves. I want to, you know, I will ask the mayor. Respectfully, I, you know, I was ready to vote on the budget. But is there something we can do outside of pulling from reserves that would?
Yeah, I got a couple of comments. First of all, we had a workshop, and I think the entire council at that time was of the opinion that if we were going to give more than that, that we wanted to see something that showed why we would be giving more than that. And in particular, Councilmember DeMoto, you said you didn't like round numbers, and you didn't like just these random checks being written to the fire company. So, so we haven't seen anything. And I do disagree with Mr. Linton. It's not insulting to ask to look at the books when you're given that kind of money. And I sent them an email that said, we're, we're happy to work with you if you just come here and show us what you need. And, and so, my thought is that we pass the budget as is, and then we invite them, as, as you just said, to come here and work with the town to figure out exactly what their needs are. You know, we're pressed against, you know, trying to be fiscally responsible across the entire spectrum of everything. And public safety is not just fire company, it's also the police department. And you've advocated for years on building a police station. Well, everybody's pinching. We raised the taxes last year so we could afford the bond, and, and here we are. And I'm trying to, trying to make it so that all that money that came in on the tax raise, that we sat there at the table and said, this needs to go toward the police station, it's going toward it. We're not robbing from, from the fire company and putting it somewhere not safety-related. That 47,000 is shown in the budget going toward the police station. So, in regard to your amendment, you know, if I got to give the fire company a call and say, listen, we're not trying to insult you, we just want to know exactly what you need, and we'll work with you. You know, I, I love the fire company, and I'm not going to stop volunteering, even if they're mad at me. I'm, and Carl's still going to eat, so. But, you know, I'll be there at the duck race, and I'll be there at the carnival, and I'll do whatever I can do to help them. But I, I don't think it is insulting or unreasonable to have them come here and say, tires cost this much, we're going to have to replace these. You know, whatever a truck costs, the town has helped them in the past. When, when Pat was out there helping him, I was on the council, so I voted for all that, too. So, we've helped them in the past, and if they need help, we'll help them. But we, we got an entire budget to look at. So, you know, that's, that's my opinion. I'm, you know, I'll, I'll take a tomato to the face, but 200,000's where I stand for a blank check. And if they come in and can show us that they need more budget amendment, we'll do it, so.
Can I say something? So, I don't think it's disrespectful at all giving what we're giving, because everybody, as the mayor said, everybody's had to pinch, we've had to raise taxes, costs across the border going up. Being a numbers person and an accountant, I don't see a problem with looking at the books. We're very much involved in the chief's books and seeing everything that goes in and goes out. We do it with, when we gave out the loans during COVID, and businesses came and asked, we had to see, you know, we needed to see certain things, like anything else in life, that's smart business. And at the end of the day, this is a business, yes, it's the town, but they have to fiscally look at, and the mayor is responsible for looking at what's coming in and what's going out, and he's got to get that budget in there. So, I don't think it's disrespectful at all to ask to see that. And the mayor, luckily, to what you have said, Councilman DeMoto, the mayor has opened that up. Hey, if something comes up this year, his door is open, come talk to him. And I would hope you all would hear what they have to say, and I trust that you will, or I'd be running again. But I, I trust that you're going to make the right choices and, and look at everything that goes into doing that. And the mayor has opened that up to be able to say, hey, because we all know, we all love the fire company. I mean, come on, I've been taking my kids to the parade and the carnival for 30-some years. So, we do appreciate them, that's a given, but we have to squeeze somewhere. And the mayor, I, I got a lot of respect for the mayor, because he looked long and hard. And by the way, staff has been working on this budget for how many months? This isn't something we just started, it starts in, what, November? So, somewhere around there. So, it's not taken lightly, no one wants to cut anything from anybody, but we still are giving what I consider a good amount. And obviously, if we could give more, we would give more. So, I just think, you know, kudos to the mayor, because at the end of the day, he is responsible for the budget. We're just voting on it.
Another comment, unless other, other folks have a round one comment?
Oh. What I'll, what I'll do, you know, I don't, I don't like being the sole decision-maker in a yes or no when it comes to a body. So, what I'll do is, I will accept the amendment, and what'll have to happen now is it'll have to be seconded. I'm not gonna be the yes man or the no man for this entire body. So, okay, I will accept the amendment, but we will need a second for the amendment, as it has been said that it will be pulled out of reserves. Do we have a second?
May I make a comment, or you're, you're in the vote, so go ahead.
Yeah, we need to, you're gonna need that before you can discuss more.
All right, hearing none, then we will go back to the original motion, which is to approve, and we will need to make another amendment, and I'll lean on to Katie for this. Let's look at the South Main Street Traffic Circle rebid. What does the exact number have to be? Because I've got a couple of different numbers highlighted for the-
So, we still have a little bit of budget left in the current year that we were able to use, so we need to bring the fiscal year '26 budget up by $200,000, so to $2,050,000.
Okay. So, the budget, I need to make an amendment?
Yeah.
You need an amendment to my motion for how much? $200,000?
Yeah, so we'd add an additional $200,000 to the South Main Street roundabout, which would bring that total project up to $2,050,000.
Okay. So, I'll go ahead and make a table amendment now to my original motion to add $200,000 in for the South Main Street Traffic Circle rebid. Do we have a second?
Second. Oh, I'll let-
Let's give that one to Lynn.
I'll second that.
Exactly.
All right. All right, now, Tom, we can-
Discuss.
It's seconded. Do we discuss and have to vote on that individually, or?
I'd like to discuss first, if I could.
Do we, do we move on to the third one now? Just to make sure.
So, now, the, the present motion contains that amendment.
Yep.
Budget with that amendment.
Yep.
So, you can take your third-
That's what I thought.
-point in time, see if it becomes a part of the motion.
All right.
Then we discuss.
Katie? For the water and sewer number one feed cable, kind of an upgrade.
So, that's actually an emergency budget amendment for '25, so that's separate from '26, from fiscal year '26. So, that's a, that's a whole nother budget amendment in it, so we don't have to do that in this one.
Okay, good. All right, so, right now, we have a motion on the table to approve the budget for fiscal year '25, '26 with a table amendment to add $200,000 for the South Main Traffic Circle rebid, which has been seconded. So, now, we will open up the floor for discussion on the entire budget with the amendment for the Traffic Circle rebid. Again, we're not talking about the Traffic Circle, just the budget.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanna talk about the money, if I could, because I just wanna remind people it's coming out of the ARPA money.
Part of it.
Part of it.
Part of it.
So, $1,145,000 is coming from ARPA, and then the rest would be coming from reserves.
That, that was the point I was gonna make, is we're willing to take money out of reserves for the Traffic Circle, or not willing to take money out for other key safety services.
I'd have to argue that's a key safety, streets and roads issue.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm making a point. That's all.
Well, now, we're moving the money right now. We still have not voted on the Traffic Circle itself.
Right.
So, we'll, we have a motion on the floor for the fiscal year '25, '26 budget with the amendment of that $200,000 for the Traffic Circle. Do we have any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving fiscal year '25, '26 budget with the table amendment for the South Main Street Traffic Circle rebid and the additional $200,000, please sit in front of us saying aye.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this where I can ask for the money for Rails to Trails West?
If you wanted to ask for that, you, you would need to do it as an amendment.
Right now?
Yes, before they vote on, before you all vote on it at the last minute.
So, I know, I made it in the last minute. So, I would like to request, because we've been in discussion on that Rails to Trails West and the access, and access and the potential cold storage property. So, in discussing with the staff and the mayor, I know we need some money to get that started, as far as potentially Phase One. We did get the money, land acquisition money, about $250,000, but this is to get started on the process, to get some movement for appraisal, legal fees, and potentially Phase One or Two environmental assessment, because obviously, it's gonna be like the train, you know, the trail, it's gonna take quite a few years. So, I understand we need about $10,000 to be able to even move forward with that at this point in time. So, my question would be, could we make a motion to approve $10,000 to start that discussion? And then, I would ask the mayor, could it come out of that 825 that we put on Rails to Trails East, or no?
I think this needs to be designated Rails to Trails West. What we did do was we took out $10,000 that was in there for urban renewal authority. So, this would be added in to further the process of, of a chunk of property that's over on the Frederick County side.
Okay.
So, is that a fair statement? Katie?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we could use a TAP grant, because that's a, a different section of that, and it's a different county.
So, where could we get that money from?
So, that $10,000 would come from Parks Reserves.
Parks Reserves. Okay. You good with that?
If, if you're gonna make that amendment and it gets seconded, then-
Okay.
So, then you'd have to make a table-
So, I wanna make an amendment to add $10,000 to Rails to Trails West. Right now, there's zero there, so we can get the discussion and the movement on potential purchase of the land at the cold storage area.
Being the original movement, again, I'm not gonna make a sole decision for an entire entity, so I will accept the motion. We will need a second for that.
If I, if I second, does that just get the discussion going on? Okay, because I got a one question to ask, Councilwoman-
That's pending.
Yeah, the original motion.
Which is the whole budget with these two amendments.
With these two amendments.
If, if it's accepted by the original movement and seconded.
Okay. May I ask the councilwoman, just so we don't go back and forth here? Would you be willing to accept, I know $10,000, you said that was willing to, you know, cover a whole host of costs related to getting it going. Can we just add money to get the appraisal done now? Or is, will the extra money go, is, is extra money needed to do the Phase One site assessments?
So, yeah, Phase One appraisal, legal fees, and potentially start the environmental site assessment.
Well, I'll second the amendment to get it going, because if we don't get something, we're just treading water on that one, too.
So, discussion?
He's seconded, so yes, now you can discuss.
Council President, may I?
Yeah.
So, this is coming out of reserves? This money?
Park Reserve specifically.
That would be $10,000 coming out of Parks and Rec Reserve.
Okay.
Parks and Rec specifically.
Yeah.
So, again, I'll just, I know it's apples and oranges, but we're willing to take money out of reserves somewhere for this initiative, but we're not willing-
Councilmember Demoter-
I'm, I'm speaking.
I'll let you finish, but I'm gonna rebut it, so.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm just making an observation.
Yeah, well, that's a great observation. However, we have said that we're more than happy to sit down with the fire company and see what they need and make that adjustment. More than happy to do it, okay? So, you keep trying to pin it down like we're not willing to help, and that's just not true. We're trying to build a police station that you've been arguing for three or four years.
Absolutely.
So, don't sit there at the table and start acting like you're the only one who cares about the fire company, because two years ago, you didn't. And Jimmy said it. And one year, you voted against the budget, because we didn't have the police station.
That's correct.
So, it's kinda like, you're running at the tab, but you're not willing to pay for it, so.
Well, may I comment?
Yeah.
My, my point in all this was, I, I, I think the whole fire company negotiations weren't necessarily our finest hour on, on all, all parties. I'm disappointed that we didn't take this past year. We could've taken this past year to sit down with them and have that kind of workshop, and now we're saying, "We still wanna do that, but we're gonna, we're gonna do it next year." And that's, that's all. I mean, we've each met our points and-
Do you not remember that we were sitting down with them last summer to try to work out some stuff? So, yes, we have been working with them for a year, okay? And this is where we are, and it's a tough decision.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I'm willing to take the tomatoes for it, but, but I, I am a little bit resentful of you sitting at the table and making it sound like you're the one who's, who's coming to help them, when all of us are making a tough decision.
I, I understand.
All right, do we have any further discussion? All right. So, right now, we have a motion on the table with two amendments. One, to add $200,000 for the Traffic Circle rebid, which we have not discussed yet, and another to add $10,000 from the Parks and Rec Reserve, which obviously is a line item that cannot be used for the fire department, is that correct? I mean, it's, it's two separate, basically, entities, or?
And realistically, the fire, the fire contribution comes out of the operating budget, so if you increase that, you are decreasing your transfer over to capital projects. And that kind of helps offset how much you have to pull from reserves. So, right now, it's, it's $43,000 that we didn't contribute to them, that we have going to the public, public safety for the fire, sorry, for the police station. So, essentially, if you gave that back to them, you just wouldn't be putting that $43,000 for the police station.
Yeah. Any further discussion?
I have nothing, Mr. President. I don't wanna prolong it. Thank you.
Is it possible to take a five-minute recess? Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Counsel?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. John, is that okay with CMC? All right, thank you. All right, I'll call the meeting back to order. CMC back up. All right. I want to apologize for the brief recess, but this is a decision that obviously, none of us take lightly, and it's something that, that needs to be figured out and needs to be handled correctly. So, Tom, I'm, I'm sorry, but I am, I'm gonna make another amendment. I'm gonna make an amendment that we add $43,000 back into the budget for the donation for the fire company, to make it a total donation of $243,000 for this year. And I want that money not pulled from reserves. I want that money pulled from the safety sector line item. We were lucky enough this year, from the Carroll delegation, to get a $100,000 donation for the police station. With that $100,000 donation, you know, it, it really does help. And I think that even if we were to not very quickly cut the fire department's budget, we're still positive $67,000 more than we thought we would be for the police station before we got that. I will say this in an open meeting right now. There is nothing insulting about asking to see and discussing the books of a fire company that we are giving a quarter of a million dollars to. So, to take that as an insult is incorrect. And it's not right. This is taxpayer money. It is not guaranteed money to you. It is money that's given to you. That does not mean that we don't appreciate every single thing that the fire company does. Okay, I coach six, 700 kids over in a field that they provide. Okay, we pay $5,000 a year. Could they charge us more? Absolutely. But then, we would have to charge everybody else more. So, I firsthand see what they do, but that doesn't mean that you are, do a blank check, and we have no idea where it goes. And I actually take offense to the fact that you think we wouldn't know what your books mean. And if we don't, you can take the time to teach us, because we will learn. So, my amendment is for this year and this year only. And myself, the mayor, and Katie, who is our treasurer, will sit down, and we will learn their books, and then we will figure out what is right and what is fair, because when I have people come to me and say, "Where's my tax money going?", I'm gonna be able to tell them. Why are we giving a quarter of a million dollars to the fire department? I don't know. That answer is not acceptable. So, the way I see it, we're still $67,000 positive for the police station. The fire department is whole for one year. But, Mr. Linton, it is not an insult. We will sit down. We will look at your books together, and I need to know where this money's going. Do we have a second on this motion?
Before we-
Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I'm concerned with the amendment, not because of the money. It's because of how we're arriving with the extra money, because it's coming from a state bond that was awarded to us for a specific purpose.
It's not coming from the bond. I'm using the bond as basically just saying there's an extra $100,000 in that line item. It's coming from the additional money that was put in there.
But the additional money is coming from the state bond, from the $100,000 from the state for the police station.
Carl.
Okay, yes, sir.
I will let Katie explain it to you, but no, it is not.
Okay, so, the $43,000 is actually just coming from what we had planned to transfer to the police station project.
Okay.
What, what Councilman Washbauer is saying is that we got an extra $100,000 in the budget this year from a grant that we weren't anticipating getting, that we didn't know that we had got until after the mayor had put the budget together.
Okay.
That was a, that was an add at the workshop that, when we found out about that. So, what he's saying is, is, you know, we got that money that we weren't anticipating. So, for this year, we will honor the 10% and not use $43,000 of it for the police station, because we got that police grant that we weren't anticipating.
Well, okay, would the, can I suggest a change to your amendment, sir? Is that, is this the proper time, or is that another?
Because already it's been seconded.
Okay.
It's been seconded, you can discuss it.
Okay, I'm discussing. If we move forward in any such way, given them more money, I would like to see some arrangement of formal agreement within the next year formulated, because as Mr. Linton said, this was pretty much a handshake agreement 50-some years ago for 10% of our tax revenue. 50 years ago, that might not have been that much. There wasn't much development happening here. I-70 wasn't around. Town expenses weren't that much. 50 years later, we all know expenses are going up. Also, in the meantime, it is interesting to know, to note also, that part of the impact fees from our development, that doesn't seem to wanna happen, approximately, I'm just pulling this, $3,500 per permit goes through the fire- Approximately, I, I'm just pulling this, 3,500 per permit goes through the fire department. So any development, they get a kick, uh, they get a piece of our. Per, permit fee for, for them. So they're anticipating, they'll get a cut of the green tree permit fees if Mount Airy Crawson ever happens. They're gonna get approximately 1.2 million dollars. Out of the, out of our impact fees if that happens. So. By their own admission, the impact fees that they're gonna be receiving should cover the cost of the equipment. So I would like to see moving forward within the next year. Some type of formal agreement because 10%. Is unsustainable for this town in the long run. It just is. We can discuss it. We can look for funding from the state and everything else. But I am concerned that we are on an unsustainable path. With the fire department funding from this town. And I remind you, as Jimmy Linton said, it's not in code. It's not, it is not in our charter. It's an independent company. So we're really under no obligation to give them anything. Other towns, just give them 100,000. So. I'm not saying we shouldn't give them money. I'm just saying, everybody up here, some people are making it sound like it's a town entity and department. And it's not. He was saying, what other department in town would 10% come from? It's, the fire department is part of the town, is part of the history. But it's not a mandated department. I'm sorry to say that. But it is what it is with the charter. So we take care of what, what we are legally responsible for when budgets are formed. Thank you, Council President.
No problem, thank you. Uh, I will say that, uh, building, just as a quick thought, uh, is not the answer. I mean, the, the more people you have, the more structures you have, the more. Burden it's gonna put on them, which is then gonna create more need for money. So it's a, uh, constant go around. Uh, the fact of the matter is they. Need money. I, it, it was a very difficult decision. And the, and I don't like pulling from the police station, but do I feel like we're gonna spend as much money as, as, in that line item in, in one fiscal year? Probably not. I think that the fire department will spend that 43,000 this year. Uh, we're still positive 67,000. Thank you to the Carroll delegation. So, but I, but I agree with you and that was my, my statement to, uh, to Mr. Linton. Thinking that's an insult's the wrong mindset. You're getting a quarter of a million dollars. There's nothing insulting about us knowing where that money is going. So that. You know, will, that meeting will happen, uh, within the next couple of months.
And I'd like to say a shout out to Katie. Thank you for explaining. I didn't mean to. Be aggressive on your amendment. I just wanted to make sure the money wasn't coming from, from the bond.
Any further discussion under Mayor Hushaw?
Yeah, so the frustration with me is that. We, we had a workshop. I'm the one who's gotta stick my neck out there. For this stuff and, and come up with a budget and everybody. Sitting at this table wanted to see something that justified the amount of money. That we were giving the fire company. And I built a budget that I thought was responsible toward all that. When we raised taxes, that was a tough decision. And that's one that everybody in this town. Had to. Work their way through and I took tomatoes at that time. For that, but we need to build a police station. I'm okay with this, uh, budget amendment. If it gets the, uh, budget through, I think the, uh, fire company. Hopefully would be willing to meet with us. Within the next year and show us. You know, the justification for the amount of money that we give them. As an example, in 2002, 10% of our tax base. Was $92,000. Now. In 2025, it's 240,000. Every time we raise taxes. They end up getting more money. Which is fine. Except for the fact that we raised taxes to build a police station. So this is, it's frustrating to me because I'm the one sticking my neck out, which is fine. I got thick skin. But, uh, but, you know. To get the budget through, we can go this route. I hope the fire company does well with it. I hope they're very successful and, uh, and I'm still gonna. Be there at the duck race and eating with Carl and eating breakfast and, and helping them in every way that I can. So there is nothing personal at this table. Toward the fire company. I'm the chief financial officer of this town and I have responsibilities. And I'm trying to make, make, keep, keep Mount Airy as, as good as I can and, uh. And that was my effort, so. Do as you will, counsel. I think, uh, I think you're coming up with reasonable. Discussion, reasonable arguments and, uh. Go forth.
I want to be very, very transparent in, in, uh, in all ways. Number one, uh, it's no disrespect to the mayor, that the time and. Heather and Katie and town staff, the time they spent on this budget is, is immense. It, it's just a very. Difficult decision. I also want to say, and I want to confirm with Katie. The ask from Jimmy Linton and from the fire company was for that additional 43,000 to be 243,000, correct?
So they kept quoting 47,000, but we only took 43,000.
Okay. So it'll be 243,000 with that number. That's based off of. The previous tax rate, correct? Okay, so the, still, the tax increase. That was increased based on the police station. Every single cent that. Was the increase is still going to the police station. I need to make that very clear. The 243. That is now being upped, if we approve this budget, uh, does not include the increase that was made last year.
It's based on 16, 16 cents.
16 cents per hundred is, is what it's based.
So. What was stated, the reason for the increase is still in fact true. It will remain true. Uh, until this police station is built, uh, as long as I'm a part of this council. So, um. We're not doubling back on why we raise taxes. So every single extra penny that every one of us, including the people that are sitting at this table. Uh, are paying this year extra than they have years before is going to the police station, which is where we said it would go. So. With that being said.
Council President, just one quick comment or question to you, or not to you, it'll be really quick. Do we believe that? The wording of they need to shit, sit down and show us some things. Are crystal clear and they will follow, or should we add? Certain language for that extra 43 to, for them to get it to as requirement for us to sit down?
No, I don't, I don't believe that the amendment needs to have any stipulations right now. What we're looking at is going into fiscal year 26. In order, in my mind, and I want to be a part of these meetings and I, I would like Katie to be a part of these meetings. Is we just need to know where this money is going and we need to know a reasonable, you know, what's reasonable and, and what. Not saying that they're doing anything wrong with it. I promise you they're not.
No.
But I need to be able to tell people as, you know, we're sitting up here spending other people's money. We need to be able to tell them where it's going.
No, I'm fine with that.
So it's for informational purposes and it's for transparency.
Yeah.
You know, every, everybody, every public entity is. You can see their books. If we're gonna give a quarter million dollars to somebody, I need to kind of know what's going on.
I'll agree and they're honorable, so I.
And your, your motion. Your motion shows that everybody at this table. Is working on the fire department's half. Behalf, so, uh, so I, I respect that. It's not just one person supporting the fire company. We all do.
Yeah, oh, 100%, 100%. Katie?
We just need to know who officially seconded that fourth amendment.
Steve.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. All right, so let me see if I can go through this, uh, without messing it up. So we have a motion to approve ordinance 2025-5 to adopt the budget for fiscal year 25, 26 with. A table amendment to add $200,000 for the South Main Street traffic circle rebid. With a table amendment. To add. $10,000 from the Parks and Rec Reserve for the Rails to Trails.
West.
West. And then a table amendment to add $43,000. From the safety sector line item to. The added donation for the fire company for a total of $243,000. Uh, all of those have been seconded. They are on the table. Katie, is that correct? We're good? All right, all in favor of approving ordinance 2025-5 to adopt the budget for fiscal year 25, 26 with the three amendments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, thank you. All right, next up. Ordinance 2025-8 budget amendment to reallocate $80,000 from inflow and infiltration to water system capital improvements. This is for emergency adoption. I'll make a motion to adopt. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor of approving ordinance 2025-8 for emergency adoption for the budget amendment to reallocate 80,000 from inflow and infiltration to water system capital improvements, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, ordinance 2025-9 budget amendment to remove $50,000 from Prospect Park improvements. This is for introduction. I'll make a motion to introduce. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we'll see that again next month. Uh, ordinance 2025-10 budget amendment to remove $500,000 from Center Street Connection for introduction. I'll make a motion to introduce. Do we have a second?
Second. Bless you.
All right, next up, ordinance 2025-11 budget amendment to remove. $1,450,000 from the South Main Street Roundabout for introduction. I'll make a motion to introduce. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Next up, ordinance 2025-12 budget amendment to remove. No, $1,450,000. Yeah. That 1 million can just go to me. Next up, ordinance 2025-12 budget amendment to remove $642,500 for the permanent police station for introduction. I'll make a motion to introduce. Do we have a second?
Second.
Next up, ordinance 2025-13 budget amendment to remove $160,000 from Town Hall Capital Improvements for introduction. I'll make a motion to introduce. Do we have a second?
Second.
Next up, ordinance 2025-14 budget amendment to remove $3,924,403 from Water System PFOS for mediation for introduction. Do we have an introduction? I'll make a motion to introduce.
Oh, second.
Wake up.
You caught me off guard there, Council President.
2025-15 budget amendment for, to remove $348,511 from Police Principal and Interest on Bonds and Notes for introduction. I'll make a motion to introduce. Do we have a second?
Second.
I just, quick comment here. Yeah, all these budget amendments are what get us through the fiscal year, so, uh, so don't feel like all this money is going away from these projects. It's, uh, what the auditors need and what Katie needs to get us across the fiscal year. They're introduced this month, this month, next month, they'll be, uh, they'll be passed and, and it moves, uh, whatever we just approved as far as the budget goes. But most of, whatever's left over in those projects goes over.
Katie, basically it's just housekeeping. It's money that was in the budget that wasn't spent that's being moved.
Right. Yeah, most of these projects that we're pulling money out are, we've already added that money in for 26 that you just.
Thank you, Council President and Mayor. That's what I was gonna. Say, thank you.
I always want to make people nervous for a little bit, that's all.
Well, yeah.
Next up, resolution 2025-2 to allow alcohol at Mount Airy Oktoberfest, September 27th, 2025. From 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. in downtown Mount Airy. This is for adoption. I'll make a motion to adopt. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, uh, Mayor, you have what you need to, for this adoption. Everything's good, right, with that document?
Yeah. Yes, when Kelly brings in the paper, I'll be able to sign it if you approve.
Okay. All right. Uh, any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor of approving resolution 2025-2 to allow alcohol at Mount Airy Oktoberfest, September 27th, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at downtown Mount Airy, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you. So I know Antietam's here. Do we want to let him do his thing quick before we bounce back up to the roundabout? Let's go ahead. That way you don't have to sit longer. I know it's gonna be a little bit longer of a night. So, under unfinished business, we have a PWA with Antietam Broadband from approval. If you want to, I'll relinquish to Mr. McCarron as well.
Yeah, I'll make it quick. Uh, I'm Chris Shipman. I'm the president of, uh, Antietam Broadband. So the last time we spoke, uh, there was some unfinished business in reference to exactly where we're gonna build. We went back and, uh, looked at our agreement, looked at our design. And, uh, our agreement is to build out the Carroll County section as well as the Frederick, uh, section of the, uh, Mount Aries. So 100% of the, uh, the county will be built out, uh, with, with our fiber. In addition to that, we were, we were very closely with the, uh, with the team, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, in reference to, uh, the distribution of the fiber. As well as, uh, assigning of the, the project management team to make sure that we have, uh, no stupid human tricks that, uh, that happened along the way. Our agreement, uh, is 100% on us from a capital investment. So as we discussed last time, multimillion dollar project that will be privately invested by the Scher's family and, um. Any questions? I wasn't gonna go through the whole presentation be, just because it's very lengthy and detailed. But, uh, it's good homework assignments as, as you go through your night.
I just have one question, Mr. Shipman. During your presentation right now, you said the whole county would be built out. Did you mean?
Yes, sir.
The city or the town?
The, the town, I'm sorry.
Okay, so both the Carroll and Frederick counties. So anything that incorporates the town boundaries?
Yes, sir.
Should have it. Okay, thank you.
It's been a long night.
You have, uh, the redlined version, uh, in your packet that shows the change from the last time, which essentially, the only change being. Clarifying that the installation will occur throughout the town, uh, both on the Carroll and the Frederick sides.
Yes, sir.
Well, I think that was the only thing that was kind of holding us up.
Yeah.
You know, for the PWA. So I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Do that.
Yeah, I appreciate that and we're excited for, uh, for the town and, and for the community. It's, uh. As, as discussed throughout several of the presentations, this is a great town and. An opportunity for us to be a great partner, not only in. The residential business, but also in the, uh, the educational side of, of the county and, and town as well. So. Thank you for your time tonight.
Anyone have any questions?
I, I have a quick question for you. So, so in terms of customer satisfaction, the, the whole installation process, the trenching, the disruption of yards and.
Yes, sir.
Rightways and, so. If I, if it's not in the package, if I wanted to look for your customer satisfaction ratings, where would I find it? And let me ask this question. What is the worst? Comment you received in any town when you, when you did installation of, of your wiring? Can you share that with us?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna curse on this, but. Yeah, so. What I'll tell you is, is. We will do everything within our, uh, you know, our foresight and. In view of, of customer satisfaction, make sure that we do it right. I'm here tonight as the president because of that conversation. You have my name, my number. Uh, we are fully rooted within the community. Uh, we just opened up a business off of Baltimore Avenue. Uh, we have a storefront. We're getting ready to hire additional seven folks in that, that storefront. Uh, so we're not a, a company that's gonna use grant money to build and go. As you see through the Scher's family and the history being over 100 years, uh, company in, in the state of Maryland. Uh, again, we're not a company that's gonna invest over $54 million and have a crappy customer satisfaction. You can look at our website. We're very transparent, uh, and who we are. Uh, you can look at social media comments about who we are. Uh, you also see some folks that may have said some derogatory comments. Uh, but you also see where we respond very firmly and, and correctively with, uh, with what we expect as a company. Uh, me as a leader in the organization, I, I expect three things. Uh, honor, integrity and work ethic. Uh, that's who I am as a leader and that's my expectation of, of the employees that work for me. So, um. We may not always do it right, uh, but you'll have my commitment to respond with, uh, the, the need and the expectation of, of fixing whatever we miss.
All right, thank you.
I have one question. So on your maps, thank you by the way, what's the difference between the red and the blue circles?
Yeah, it's probably the person that did it, um.
I mean, what does that indicate where you're gonna?
Yeah, so businesses and homes. And then where, what type of pedestal that we use. The goal is to use a pedestal that's less intrusive, just because of, uh, where some of the homes are. We want to make sure it's, uh. It's, uh, friendly to the, to the sight, uh, to the eyesight. Uh, but that's truly the only reason of, of the different colors there.
So these circles on here would, could potentially be a pedestal...
Yes, ma'am.
In someone's front yard.
Uh, front, it could be front or back.
And then is that gonna service, like, say it goes on a street, would it be servicing a bunch of homes on that street?
Yes, ma'am. It could service up to four, four homes, yes, ma'am.
Up to four per pedestal?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Council President, one thing, when he said front, back, behind home, first off, what is a pedestal is a little thing you see from the street where the wires go into and stuff?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
That one. And since the big topic in Carroll County right now is rightaways and everything else, you are just gonna be using existing rightaways that are already in front of the houses and everything else?
Already designated as rightaways, yes, sir.
You're not gonna go for anyone's...
We're not gonna create a run, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So just, um...
I have one question.
Oh, yes. No, no, please just...
We were discussing this, that there was not gonna be any pedestals. It was all in-ground mounted vaults. So that's my concern when I hear pedestal.
Yeah.
We agreed to it previously.
Yeah, there, there will be vaults as well, um, but there are gonna be some areas where we call flower pot, which is, you know, roughly, uh, three inches high, uh, but to your point, majority of them are Margaemay vaults. But we did have a caveat that, uh, in the case where it, it wasn't, uh, visually appealing, that we would have that, that option.
I don't remember those discussions, but...
Yeah, we, I mean, we already have a Verizon and a Comcast.
Right.
Plus, plus the, you know, power boxes. So there's already three things that are, you know, above ground.
Yes, sir.
We were, when we discussed, we did talk about everything being, um, flush with the ground.
Yeah, the, the flower pots, again, they're, they're optional. Uh, we just had it as an option, but to your point, majority of them, as you look at the plan, will be the, the vaults. Uh, but where we said we would put the flower pots could be in a business where it just didn't make sense to put it in a, a concrete area or something of that nature. But, but I will put a caveat. It's your approval before we put the, put it in the, into the, uh, into ground.
Yeah, that's what my question was gonna be. I mean, is that...
You have the approval to approve or deny what, what we put there.
All right. And then I just had, um, we actually had a, a town resident, uh, who's actually a part of our planning commission, just sent an email. So I just wanted to ask two quick questions. If they were to, the workers were to strike gas lines or any kind of electrical, you guys handle fixing all of that?
That's correct. Yes, sir. We triage all that.
And then is there a place where they can, uh, find out, like, um, either on a website, like policy on data caps or, uh, modem ownership versus rentals? Like where people can go just to kind of see, like, what their options are and stuff?
Yes, sir. Uh, we'll work with, uh, your, your local leadership to create, uh, create that information or put it on your website. Uh, if you look at the other municipalities that we work with, it's on their, their internal website. We give them updates, uh, pricing information. Uh, we also provided information on where we're building today, uh, for the week or for the month. But again, all that is approved by the local leadership, uh, on where we go and what, what equipment that we do put in the ground.
Okay, awesome. And then I'll move over to Tom for the PWA. How are you feeling now, you know, with, with the document?
Well, I, so I don't know about the last part. Okay, I hadn't heard about, uh, that issue before. What I would say is, is that the agreement calls for Antietam to provide design plans, among many other things, to the town for its review. Now, the way that this is currently drafted, it says that Antietam, uh, is to take into account what the town, you know, the town's input on those design plans. So I'll just kind of leave it at that. Uh, that, that's what the agreement says. I would imagine that the design plans would, uh, show what by way of fons or, um, uh, or pedestals, I'm sorry, uh, you're going to locate and where, things of that sort. Uh, but there's a commentary period, uh, that the town has a right to make comment about.
And the way we wrote ours is you have the right to approve and disapprove whatever we put in the ground. Um, so to your point, if you choose not a pedestal and a vault, that's what we use in the ground.
Okay. And that'll go through town staff? I mean, that's, that'll be more of an executive, not legislative.
And, excuse me, Mr. McCarron, is that where we have to respond within 10 business days to their design plans? No, later than...
As to the schedule...
Okay.
So this is what it says, um...
Like right above that, the FON documents, as soon as reasonably practical, and in any event, no later than 10 business days?
Where are you reading? I'm sorry, page?
I'm sorry, page four of 17. It's like... I'm, I'm just concerned if, if we have to see what the design is for each of the, each of those, is 10 days gonna be enough?
We actually said two to three weeks.
Okay, maybe I'm looking at the...
Yeah, there's, there's several different timelines in there.
Yeah, it, I mean, it does currently say, it says that the town shall provide any comments and/or approvals with respect to the FON documents as soon as reasonably practical and in any event, no later than 10 business days, uh, after receipt of each FON document. Do you want that enlarged or...
Respectfully...
Sure.
If our engineering department has to review that for the FON types, I...
That's fine.
Respectfully ask that to be increased.
To, what do we want it to?
Mr. Quinn, do you have any idea of what's...
We could say 30 calendar days.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, our, our, um, our intention is to, is to make sure that we're arm-in-arm through the process, so we don't want to be out of step.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So then we'll just have a table amendment to change, uh, 10 days to 30 calendar days. Do we have a second for that amendment?
A second.
All right.
Just make sure, do we have to change to 10 business days in the bottom of that paragraph? On, oh, so, okay.
Both places.
Yeah, anywhere that it...
10 is third, okay, related, okay. Just want to make sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gant, did you have, this is the planning commission chairman. You have something to, question?
If I may, um, from a resident standpoint, not as the chairman of the planning commission, from a resident standpoint, uh, in a neighborhood where I experienced a fiber optic installation, the unfortunate lack of planning, when that was brought in, uh, created a lot of friction within our neighborhood because vault placement, these vaults are sizable. And so vault placement, uh, the equipment coming across driveways, some of them were rubber treaded, uh, the ditch witch machine, uh, you probably are also gonna use the air compressor thumpers, they're gonna drive through the rightaways. And so the comment made earlier with regard to consideration if there's any rightaway, um, natural gas line, water line, all those arose in my experience in a previous community. And so what happened was you had homeownerships that were contesting the damage to their driveways because of the tractors that do the drilling. You also had homeowners that were very dissatisfied with the location of three-foot and four-foot wide fiber optic vaults, which have a cover that has to be accessible by the company for maintenance, repair, and troubleshooting. So what I'm saying is here, if we could get ahead of any of those possible issues by having some resident interaction when the survey comes out for the location of all this in-ground equipment, then it would, I think, kind of prevent those downstream issues when residents were calling Town Hall saying, "Who do I call because the tractors damaged my driveway? Who do I call because I don't want a four-foot vault in the center of my front yard?" That's, that's just what I'm saying. So there's a lot of ways to do that. I'm not gonna suggest them here, but I'm just kind of giving you some insight as to when the rubber meets the road, no pun intended. Um, there are some issues at the local resident level that we can plan ahead and, and prevent. Thank you.
Can I respond to that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, um, thank you for, for those comments. Uh, we, we do not use what they call, um, a sensitive, uh, track through these yards, uh, which is when they split the yard open and lay it in and then they overlay it. Uh, we actually do something similar to what was discussed there, which is, um, we jet underneath the ground to, to minimize the intrusion to the yards. Uh, but we do not cross over any of the, um, the driveways or the main roads. That, that's all underground. Uh, but we also do have language in our contract or in our agreement that states, uh, there is a financial repercussion towards us if, if we don't, uh, do what we say, uh, according to the approved, uh, project plan. Uh, we, we wanted to do that to make sure that, almost the old saying, put your money where your mouth is, you do it right and, uh, you don't have a lot of these issues. But, uh, we are also willing to, to put up a, a survey monkey of sorts to say, "Hey, are you screwing up? Yes or no? Uh, what, what can we do to respond?" Uh, and make sure that we have a, a triage expectation throughout that process.
Great.
Any questions for me?
No, I really appreciate you being here. I know it was a little bit longer of a meeting.
No, this is good. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm excited.
Um, I would just say with town staff, hopefully we can work with the residents, get some locations, like Ralph said, and, and kind of get ahead of any, you know, any issues and stuff like that. So that would be good. All right, so we have a, a motion on the table to approve, um, the PWA for Antietam Broadband, uh, with the table amendment to change the 10-day requirement for response from our engineering department to 30 calendar days. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of approving the PWA for Antietam Broadband with the table amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And thank you so much, sir, for coming up. You too. Thank you. All right, we're gonna, uh, bounce back up, uh, if we can, to, um, our new business and go to the recommendation for award for construction of the South Main Street Roundabout rebid. Um, so I'll relinquish over to Barney Quinn now, um, just for a quick overview of kind of why we're rebidding it, um, and what we're looking at.
Sure. So, um, obviously it was a couple of years ago that we had bid this out and prices have certainly changed in the last two years and, um, there was, um, complications with the awarded contractor who couldn't, um, we were approaching them first to see if we could, uh, negotiate, but, uh, they had some issues that, uh, they, they couldn't do that, so we rebid it. Um, we did get three acceptable bids, um, and, um, CJ Miller was the lower of those three bids. Uh, there's somebody who done a lot of paving in town, uh, not just for us, but for developments and, uh, they do good work, so, uh, we have a lot of confidence in them. Uh, in the discussion, there's a number with three extra zeros that didn't mean to be in there. Two billion should be two million. So apologize for that. But anyhow, um, so we're recommending to award the roundabout project to CJ Miller in the amount of $2,108,676.
All right, so to get to a, uh, discussion portion, um, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
This is gonna be, uh, a little wordy, so I'd ask you to prepare yourselves and lean in and listen, okay?
We just gotta make sure it's not a discussion. We gotta have a motion.
No, you need to finish, you have to do the full motion to be second, then we discuss.
I understand.
Yep.
I make a motion to approve awarding of the South Main Street Traffic Circle Rebid Project to CJ Miller LLC in the amount of $2,108,676, contingent on peer-reviewed modifications to the traffic circle design. Design modifications shall specify a curb and other features of appropriate design running down the center line of the roadway from the McDonald's intersection all the way to the traffic circle to prevent future U-turning vehicles prior to entering the circle.
Say that one more time for me.
Okay. The whole thing?
No, just, just with the contingent.
Contingent on peer-reviewed modifications to the traffic circle design. Design modifications shall specify a curb and other features of appropriate design running down the center line of the roadway from the McDonald's intersection all the way to the traffic circle to prevent future U-turning vehicles prior to entering the circle. The, the intent there is there needs to be a, a curb running all the way down so that people do not attempt to make the U-turns like they're currently making. It will force them to go all the way down to the traffic circle.
Okay. I'll, well, I'll tell you what, I'll second it just so we can get to discussion under Robert's rules.
That's fine. I just don't understand a word that, uh, one of the words that you're saying. So, I, I don't know what pure, or are you saying pure or peer?
Peer, peer reviewed.
Pure.
And we'll, and we'll get to, I'm sure we can massage.
So in the, in the, I'll second to get to a discussion portion, um, and, and again, just so that we can talk through it and, and...
And I'll try and explain what I mean if you have questions and we can certainly massage the wording if we need to.
So I'll, I'll open the floor for a discussion.
So, I think what the mayor's saying, and I think you need to go through that and explain, so we're looking to award, I mean, every step of the way, correct me if I'm wrong, Barney, this council's gonna have to approve the plans, correct?
No, I don't, I don't think that's what's being asked. I, I think what Steve's referring to is what was already reviewed. Um, it was a comment that came from Officer Brooks, uh, through the streets and roads. And, um, I'm very aware of what needs to be done, uh, is just running an extra curb all the way to the circle.
Right, we discussed that.
But, um, you know, it's, uh, which might include some signage or some, some other things, but, um, I've, you know, we have some contingency built in currently and that contingency, as long as we don't need it for something else, would cover that cost of that curb.
Because we discussed that, taking the curb all the way up so they couldn't U-turn. You would have no choice but hitting the circle and either going out or going around and back.
Yeah, yeah. But this current design right now does not have that in there.
Yeah. And that's not gonna affect, like, stormwater management. That, that's the thing that we were waiting on, but we didn't want to change any drawings at this time, um, until we get our final approvals of our plans and then we'll feel, we can treat that as a field change. But, uh, we can, it can be done.
So that change can be made once we've gotten all the approvals? Yeah, I mean, I agree with the curb. We've talked about that for, this goes back to the previous council member Washabaugh discussion six years ago. So, we've talked recently about getting that curb to go up and the whole point is to mitigate the safety issues down there and not have those U-turns.
And I'm okay with that. The only thing that, uh, that we need to be concerned about is that, I mean, you're creating a channel now on a single lane. So if you have an accident in that single lane, you're, you're restricting the ability. Number one, you're blocking the road at that point. You know, if somebody crashes, what, if somebody rear-end somebody, there's, you know, you're either gonna be going off the road or is there a curb on the right side as well?
You'll come down to a point where there's a curb on your left and your right if you're making that left into that...
Yeah, so, I'm okay with approving the budget this way, I just think that there may be a time that we have to discuss this again and decide if we want to actually do that. And sometimes you have to, you have to build something out, look at it and say, "Hey, wait a minute, we, we don't need that extra piece," or something, but, but, and with the contingent money in there, I, I think we're okay, so I'm okay with this.
Well, and that would be a budget amendment to add more if you had to, to get that curb going up.
If we had to, but I, I think we're in good shape on the dollar figure that we have.
So my only question is, the peer, he means peer, P-E-E-R, peer review?
Is that the peer?
So what do you mean by mandatory peer review?
So what I mean is, so, we all think this curb is a great idea, okay? Officer Brooks thinks it's a great idea. We're not engineers, okay? So what I'm saying is, we think this is needed, or some safety improvement to achieve what we're trying to achieve. So, we can design that, but I think we ought to have somebody else review that design and say, "Yeah, that makes sense," whether it be the state of Maryland, or a consultant, or somebody needs to look at that and say, "That's a good idea, it's gonna do what you want, that's good." So, that, that's really what, what that is.
Your peer is spelled P-E-E-R.
P-E-E-R.
Okay.
Yeah. You can, we can, you can use a different word if you want, but-
I'm okay with it. My question is, who, who would that be, Barney? Who would take a look at this to QAR process?
Right. And I did hear past tense, peer reviewed.
Okay.
So, not that it's gonna be an ongoing thing, but we would go back to the design engineers and, and just say, "This is what we'd like to put in." They would give us a sketch of, of what that'll look like, and they would run it through, you know, make sure that we're not creating something more of a hazard.
Is that?
Sir?
Okay, so, thank you. Question, Barney, I've got a vague view in my head of what Councilman Munder is talking about, but I do have some questions. We're ready to go on this, we're awarding the contract. You say we have a contingency fund built in for it, is the contingency fund just for, say, the construction of it, or the review, would there be extra money in time if we took it back to the design engineer first to see if it works, if it makes, makes sense? Are we talking a week, two weeks, months before, because we've, two, two years in the, behind schedule on this now? That's the first question. The second question, when you say curb running down the middle, I'm envisioning, like, to do this, well, what I'm envisioning by what's being described here is just a standard street curb, two-sided, which basically anyone in, with a big old pickup around here will jump still and do it. A manable curb won't work, because that's not gonna work. So the only logical type of curbing down the middle of the street that will work, in my view, to stop the U-turns, is a divided highway-type curb that has curbs on both sides and probably three-foot median in the middle. That, in my view, in my mind, would be the only workable solution to stop that, kinda like what's at the Chick-fil-A turn from South Main now, which, does that road, as currently designed and built, have that ability to handle, like, say, a median strip down the middle, or would we have to totally redesign that whole road?
So that, that's where we don't want to go. We don't want to redesign that whole road. So the only, the only room that we're gonna have is an eight-inch, basically an eight-inch high, eight-inch wide curb going up. We're not gonna have room for a four- or five-foot wide island, otherwise you have to do a roadwiding, now you're adding more impervious surface, which we gotta go back to the drawing board with stormwater management, I don't think we want to go there.
So it's kinda almost like, I get what you're saying, but it's like, to me, it's an eight-inch curb is useless if someone in a big pickup will just say, "The hell, the heck with it," almost caught it, oh, caught it, "the heck with it," and still hop it. I know it will stop the small little cars that I'm seeing now doing the U, the U-turns and things of that nature, but I'm concerned, part of it, if we, I mean, I don't want to, like, delay it for six months while we're doing a review, that's why I just want to make sure that we're not delaying it for an unusable amount of time, just to be told by the traffic engineer, "No, it doesn't make sense." And that's what I would, yeah, I mean, that's what I'm concerned, I'm concerned with some other things on design, but I'll can talk to you off the record, I'm concerned, yeah, any, anyhow, but I get where you're coming at, and I was, I'm not against the idea, I just want something that is truly usable, that does, that does what we're intended to do. And if it's, doesn't, then even, even if we put it, put it in and we find later we're either stuck with it, and also the plowing of the roads, I can see, not us, if somebody's a little eight, eight-inch curb that's open on both sides, it's gonna be taken, taken out by a plow truck in a couple, couple minutes flat. So, that's it, that's all my concerns.
And I, if I may, I think, again, the, I mean, the sentiment here, and if we need a different word somewhere, then, then suggest it, but, but that's exactly right, Councilman Munder, I mean, we don't want to hold things up, we, we have the design of the circle down, but we want this other feature, and we're talking about an eight-inch by eight-inch barricade or curb, or whatever you want to call it, but as we get into trying to design that, you know, the experts might say, "That's gonna work, that's not gonna work, that's gonna work," but you might need to widen the right hand of the road or something, but at least we're putting a marker down that says, "We want to do this right the first time, we want to get this, this designed in so that it can be built right the first time and really not have to go back and re, re, do a redo." And that, those, that's, those are some of the concerns I heard from the Streets and Roads and the MAPD and such, so.
Yeah, that's kinda where I was, I was at too, if, if we're gonna do it, I mean, we're spending $2 million on a, on a circle, that if you're not from Mount Airy, and you make a right, and you can make an immediate left, and you don't know where you're going, you're gonna make that immediate left. And they did it, and they destroyed the little plastic pylons that were, I mean, those things lasted, what, two months? And I understand the mayor's concern too about an accident, but with that curb, I'm hoping you're talking about a minor rear ending instead of a T-bone situation where somebody's making an illegal U-turn. So I, I understand that too, I, I don't think we are in any position to talk about curbing or structures or anything, I think that we are in a position to say, "We need something that's going to push vehicles north to the circle that we're spending $2 million that we want them to use, and then back down." Because as we've seen, and MAPD has seen multiple times, and that hill has seen multiple times, people don't care about double yellow lines. So, I, you know, is it possible? Don't know, but I think if we can, without holding things up, let's just find out.
Just two other things, okay, two other things while he's reading the motion. We're talking about a standard curb, we're not talking about the, I want to say, the highway divider, the-
We're not talking about any curbing.
No, but I mean-
We're talking about a structure.
Yeah.
Something that will push vehicles north.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean, it's like-
None of us are in any position to state what type of curb we're gonna put in there. That'll be up to Barney, that'll be up to-
Okay.
-a highway the council right now would be voting on stating. We need something that's gonna connect the island at Chick-fil-A to the curb at the roundabout.
Okay. Yeah, oh, yeah, no, I-
What that, what that is, somebody a lot better than us should figure out.
To be determined and call, but, okay, second, I know we have a bi-local provision within our code and stuff, I saw, I saw that one of the bidders was Rus Ross Contracting. Is the difference within the bi-local of, what is it, 10, 15%? Do we know off the top?
I think it's only 2%.
2, 2% or some, okay, so that, yeah, that's-
Not within the-
Not really within the realm of the percentage difference, I think, okay. Just would, wanted to bring, bring that up since there was a local bidder.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And this, this amendment, just to talk about something that will go down that road there, is not gonna hold you up time-wise, extreme, for an extreme amount of time.
We won't let it.
Good. We've been waiting a long time, Lynn's been waiting a long time for this. She's gonna be out there with a shovel herself.
I don't believe it.
All right, so, right now, we do have a motion with amendment, we have a motion to approve the South Main Street Traffic Circle Rebid in the amount of $2,108,676 with a table amendment contingent upon a reviewed modification to the traffic circle design. Design modification shall specify a curb or other feature or appropriate design running down the center line of the roadway from the McDonald's intersection or the island all the way to the traffic circle to prevent future U-turning vehicles prior to entering the circle. It has been seconded, do we have any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the motion to award CJ Miller $2,108,676 with the amendment that I just described, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have, back under new business, the recommendation for award for the water, water station number one, feed cable conduit upgrade, wells two and four project, so Barney, just a quick review?
Yep, so, the one change that this needed was the moving of the $80,000 from INI, so sewer capital to water capital to help make up for the extra cost of this, of this bid. But running new feeds to wells two and four is an absolute need, well two currently has no feed to it because it's broken, basically. So we're running well four by itself, or wells one and three together. Normally, we run wells two and four together, and then one and three together. So this fixes that, it's something that we could've done 20 years ago when we rehabbed that station, we chose not to, but now it's time that we, we needed to do it, so. This puts conduits in the ground with pool boxes, something that would make it easier so if we ever have to replace the line in the future, it won't cost nearly this much, it'd be easy to pull new lines in. So, we did bid it out and look with four, four bids, and the best one was for GSW Electrical, local company here in town, in the amount of $228,661.
All right.
If you, you'll see, it's, it's less than their bid price because we did-
Thank you for negotiating.
We did negotiate with the lowest bidder, basically, we had a spare communication cable that we were gonna have them pull in, but we have the conduit that'll be there if we ever have to pull a new one in, so we don't have to put the spare in now.
Okay.
So that's what that changes, basically.
Okay. Yeah, that saves us about $20,000, so, thank you for doing that. Okay, well, I'll make a motion to, to rec, to approve the recommendation for award for the water station number one, feed cable conduit upgrade for wells two and four project. Do we have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
All right, any discussion?
I just make sure we don't get any dings on this here. Fine with the lowest bidder, it looks like you negotiated with the lowest bidder after these bids were received, basically, okay? So, so, okay, so they would've, GSW probably would've got, would've gotten the award to do it no matter what, correct? Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving the award for the water station number one, feed cable conduit upgrade to GSW in the amount of $228,000, $228,661,000 for wells two and four, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I will now make a motion to move into closed session, the council's gonna roll call into closed session. Two different meetings, one under 3-305B7 for litigation, and the other under 305, 3-305B3 for land acquisition. We will roll call into closed session. After we do that, once the closed session is over, this meeting will be adjourned, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. So at this time, we will roll call, Councilmember Evans.
Aye.
Councilmember Munder.
Aye.
Council Secretary Galetti.
Aye.
Councilmember Demoter.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, we will see everyone next month, thank you.